All our late work session to order. And Jeff, will you please call the roll? It is.
That's I'm happy to.
Isn't it joint works? Are we not?
We didn't label that.
Okay. Our work session with a few invited guests who happen to be our planning commissioners. And Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Sure, Councilman May. President. Councilor Smalling.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Axner.
Here.
Councilor Hookinson.
Yep.
Mayor Philemon.
Here, thank you for that, Jeff. And I'm gonna go through our city council meeting agenda for tonight. Please throw out any questions or changes for staff to address. So we don't have anyone signed up yet for public comment tonight. We do, we will have a response to a public comment from Mr. Bill Leslie. His last public comment that we'll be addressing tonight. On our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from our June 5th and June 12th meeting minutes. We have an adoption of financial sustainability plan at parks and rep for part plan for parks and recreation. Sandy net advisory board appointments. Request for street closures and exclusive use of mining park through the 2023 mountain festival. Loan authorization on drinking water transmission line design. Contract amendment for leeway engineering solutions under representative services. As well as the adoption of the city manager recruitment position profile and hiring procedures. Under new business, we have republicarian society. One for a 2023 24 master fee in charges. Public hearing for the revised that moratorium raising limit on new wastewater connections. And a public hearing to adopt our transportation system plan. We'll then wrap up our evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. With that, let's go ahead and get this work session going on our clear and objective code audit. Yeah. Clear and objective code audit. Tyler, you want to just kick start it?
Yeah, I will just turn it over to Kelly really quick and let you introduce. Presenters that we have tonight. Yeah, as you'll remember, because the city council was the one that decided to fund this project and made it kind of a goal moving forward to take a closer look at our code to make sure it's clear and objective and make sure that different master plans are properly incorporated into the code. And as you'll remember, we were getting some challenges from different land use applicants and their attorneys. To highlight a few shady meadows, Bull Run Terrace, I think they've used PD was in there as well. So with that, the city council decided to fund this project. And we've been working closely with MIG APG and Kate and Kathy. And they've been a tremendous resource and just been doing a lot of the heavy lifting and myself and a few of the planners that were here a few months ago were assisting with that. And we've also been getting a tremendous amount of support and kind of detailed analysis from our city attorney as well on some of the heftier subjects that are kind of difficult to interpret or hard to analyze for what we need to do with those different code sections. So I want to thank Josh for really being there and helping out a lot during this project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kate and Kathy and let them kind of introduce themselves again and go through the go through the slideshow for the work session.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here. I'm Kathy Borless. I'm a principal with MIG APG.
And I'm Kate Rogers. I'm a senior planner.
So we have a presentation tonight and we will be, of course, if you do have questions, feel free to interrupt this. We're keeping this in formal and just wanted to give you, you obviously received a very large packet of information. And so this is intended to be an overview of that and just kind of get the conversation started. So, oh, and yes, can you hear me? Okay, better now. Right. Thank you. Great. So with that, I'll take the first slide. So our, again, the purpose of the meeting is to give you very, and again, keep it this very high level. Just a little bit on the maybe reminder even on the project background and purpose. Status, you know, what we've accomplished so far. And then a high level overview of the public review draft. That's the packet, the large packet you received and we had. As you noticed in your cover memo for that, I think there's some key issues, decision points that we'd like to talk about. And then just very briefly next steps. So with that next slide. So again, on the next slide, thank you. Sorry, section break there. So the project purpose, and you may recall this from a prior work session, that the primary project purpose has been to implement ORS 197 307's requirement that a government adopt and apply only clear and objective standards, conditions and procedures to the development of housing. Other exceptions to that for some historic districts. And there are also, that does not necessarily preclude a two track system. So if you do offer a clear and objective track, you can also offer a flexible or discretionary track to the applicant, but the applicant has to be able to choose a clear and objective track for the development of housing. So that was the primary focus. And I guess the other important thing, and it's the last point on that slide, is that those regulations should not, cannot discourage needed housing through unreasonable cost and delay. And so next slide. As we went through the project, as we've been going along and working on it with staff, we were able to incorporate some other amendments that came about through changes, recent changes to state law. And also because the timing worked well to coincide with your transportation system plan, there are also amendments and updates that came out of that process that are now included in this packet. So we've been able to sort of pull those in. As well as some minor changes in code that we're identified by city staff or the city attorney. Basically, whenever you crack open a code, you're gonna find some things like that and say, well, you know, let's pick those up. So. But I would say 99% of the amendments that are in front, that are in that packet or in front of you as you're reviewing that, those are going to be to address given objectives. Code issues.
I have a question. I was gonna let it go. It was gonna bite me all night, but I'll ask it now. And so for a while, there'd be a planned developments, right? Is that the right verbiage? And we decided not to do those anymore. I'm just, I'm fixating on her talking about the two tracks that you have to give a developer at the very beginning. That was, I'd never really knew about that or thought that through. So like, not that we have those available at this time, but could we potentially have a clear and objective path? And then like a planned development path? That would then kind of, so I could see as a developer, maybe I'd want I forego the clear and objective so I could have more of the flexibility that comes with a planned development possibly. But as a city, I might like that more now because with all the clear and objective stuff, it makes this over here maybe more appealing to us. So you, that's a kind of a move.
That's one way to do it. Exactly right. Yeah. I mean, some jurisdictions do have like a, like a planned development approach. Others do it through individual adjustments to the standard. So for example, they'll say, okay, you have to meet all the standards. If you don't want to meet any one of these standards, you request an adjustment to that standard. Different ways to provide that second track, either kind of on a point by point basis or a more sweeping approach.
So you'd have to really kind of incentivize that second track to get somebody off of the clear and objective track probably, right?
Yeah, it well, right. And again, that, you know, there's a balancing because depending on how strict the clear and objective track is, that flexible track looks more or less appealing for the developer, right? So there's some trade-offs there.
Thank you. This was a concept I did.
Yeah. So, uh, okay. I guess, and I'm also just wanted to note, like, for example, and this was, I think, something that had come up as a previous, you know, interest, area of interest, which was the dark skies ordinance. So it's an opportunity to bring that as part of this project. So. Let's see. Thank you. And then, thank you. Great. So I just wanted to highlight what we've accomplished so far. I mean, obviously, the major accomplishment was getting that huge packet of code amendments to you. And
It's, it's okay.
We're gonna have to stay slightly open.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Yeah. So with regard to the schedule, you know, we've been really busy, as Kelly mentioned, working the stats and attorney, working through these amendments. We've gone through multiple internal drafts trying to get them dialed in before they came to you. And, you know, we've been doing other kinds of like outreach amongst city staff and so forth and different departments to make sure that the amendments made sense for everybody. So that gets us here with that draft you. And that's definitely a major milestone. We'll be talking a little bit about the next steps at the end, but we are here now in June, obviously, that this this is noted in the schedule is a city council planning commission work session. Of course, we have a few planning commissioners. With that, we'll just move on. And the, thank you. So the overview, and Kate, I'm gonna hand this, I think, off to you to cover the questions. Just quickly noting for the overview, again, huge package. We realize that. I mean, it's a lot to go through. Most of those changes are what we call policy neutral. When we say that, you know, here I say it a lot, what we tried to do was have the outcome the same for an applicant that would walk in the door today, they were expecting a certain kind of ability to develop a certain intensity and, you know, the height setbacks, the general amount type of development that they could do today that while the rules as far as like it may undergo a discretionary process to get it, or the standards are discretionary. Housing, the rules are clear and objective, but the same general outcome is expected. So that's what we try. We're not trying to necessarily, this isn't an opportunity to radically change, you know, height setback, the fundamental zoning. It was intended to just get the standards to have clear and objective. So you may see things that you're like, oh, wow, we can change that. This is, this is not the project to do that because we really haven't sold it to the community as that, right? Trying to say this is trying to stay true to what we have today and get it clear and objective. So may see things that you want to revisit and that, okay, you can note those, but you know, again, it'll be a decision with the council.
We're not looking at policy changes.
Exactly, exactly.
For the most, for the most, for the most part. That's the caveat.
Yeah, exactly. Because what happens, and you'll see that in the questions that we have. But sometimes when you ask, or when you try and convert something to a third objective standard, you have to make a choice, right? And so there are, sometimes they're, they're small. And again, we're trying to keep it as true to policy neutral as you can. Not to make a policy change. But there are choices that sometimes have to be made. And we'll talk about those choices and some of the important ones that are still needing some, you know, would like to be. Stuff with that. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Kathy. Yeah, go to the next slide, please.
So yeah, I'm just gonna talk through the, we have eight kind of policy questions that we have for you all that are where you all have really decisions to make about potential changes and what, what is allowed or what type of standards apply to a certain type of housing, a certain type of development that would cause potentially different outcomes than what is, what would be allowed in the current code. So.
So, so I'm sorry, I just, I'm gonna have to ask a question real quick.
Sure.
Because I think, you know, for example, this, this is the first one, but it's like it, like under the C1 zone, my understanding, or the C3 zoning that multifamily was allowed on top of. And now we're saying it's, doesn't have to be on top of. And so when I see that happening then is that basically, you know, you have a 10 acre commercial space and eight acres is apartments and two acres might be something else. And so that's a huge change in what we're gonna get as far as we want our commercial to be commercial because we need commercial. And instead, we're gonna be flooded with apartments. So that is a huge policy change.
No, that's, that's actually not. So the C2 currently says housing has to be above. The C3.
General commercial.
Yeah, village commercial, as you'll remember, with Bull Run Terrace, it can be behind, beside, or above. And so that's, I think that's the policy question they're getting to here on this slide.
Or like C1, you didn't even allow multifamily.
No, it's, it's allowed right now.
On top.
Yeah.
C1. Many uses. Row houses.
It's a conditional, it's a conditional use in the C1 zone currently.
It's a conditional use.
And we, we can't have it be a conditional use any longer.
So this is all pressured by the two rules, 2001 and all the rest, right?
No, you want to explain that, Kathy?
Yeah. So again, this is, this is not necessarily related to the building housing, right? This is applying to, for example, a multifamily. And so this is about having clear and objective standards. So the, the challenge is, so right now we have housing types of multifamily housing that is not contained within a commercial building. So standalone multifamily is conditional use near C1 zone. And it's a higher conditional use in C3. What state law tells us, to understand it, is that if you're going to allow a housing type at all, you have to allow it through a clear and objective track. So it can be allowed outright. But it can't be the only way to get to the housing type can't be through conditional use. So you got a choice. Now you could say, well, fine, we're not gonna allow it at all. Right? Or we're only gonna allow it above. We're not going to allow it here. Because again, this is multifamily that is not contained within a commercial building. So it is contained within a commercial building. That's different.
They can, just so I clarify, the condition right now is that it has to be on, on, on top. But I mean, it has to be part of the commercial.
It's not the condition.
The, the permitted outright use is that it could be above.
Yeah.
There is another use listed in the C1 for standalone multifamily without commercial. And we can't, we either have to, as Kate will explain, we either have to remove it from the code or we have to move that to a permitted use, which I doubt you'll want to do as a group.
Okay. I'm not seeing multifamily in the C1 except for a conditional use.
Exactly.
That's what they're saying. Yeah.
So.
So we need to get rid of all the conditional uses, kind of what I'm understanding, right?
Housing, right. That can't be the only path for housing development.
I just want to make sure I was right.
But we also have the option of not allowing it at all.
Exactly. Yeah. So that's the, that's the decision. That's the direction we want from the law tonight. And that's, that's actually what's recommended in the, in the draft amendments in your packet. Yeah. So it's a conditional use today. Stand, when, again, we're talking standalone multifamily. It's a permitted use if it's part of a mixed use development, either above or beside or behind a commercial use. And so on the next slide are kind of the three potential approaches to addressing those.
Oh, second, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
What I did with the zoning map on there.
That's, that's the map, just to point out where those zones are. So the recommended option, which is in the draft amendments in your packet, is to, to actually eliminate standalone multifamily as a conditional use. So basically it would only be allowed in the C1 and C3 zones as part of a mixed use development. So that would address the concern that you had where, you know, you could have a whole property taken up by just multifamily development. So it would have to be part of a mixed use development. So that, that is the recommendation. And again, the sort of alternative to that would be to create a new clear and objective path to approval for standalone multifamily. If you wanted to encourage multifamily development in those zones, you could allow it. And you would have to establish a new set of, you know, criteria and standards to permit that use.
And I guess I just wanted to highlight that, and you may have noticed it in this packet, but a few of these are going to change the uses that are permitted for those properties. So that is one to trigger potentially measure six notice. And so that always raises questions in the community. What does this mean and why is that happening? And I guess we wanted to highlight, that's one of the reasons this particular item is in front of you is we have a recommendation. It's in the draft that you have in front of you, but it's an important one and it will be one that might get some conversation going.
Well, Kelly, we have complete standalone multifamily. You see one, right? Unpleasant. What's that one? Residential compound, I forget the side stream.
Yeah, we do, we do have a few. Yeah, you're correct. We have so we would be. We have at least one or two on beers and we have, and we have at least one or two on Hood Street.
Okay, right.
And they were all, they were either approved through the conditional use permit process, like the one on Hood was just put in like six years ago. Or they might, there's a few of them that might predate zoning code. I think one of them that is owned by Mr. Fleishman might predate the zoning code because it's probably from the 60s.
So what would that become then? Would they, that be a conditional?
Or no, what would happen is in the future, if you went with what staff's recommending, is it would have to be entirely commercial or it would have to be commercial with residential associated with it, but it wouldn't be able to be just pure residential anymore.
What does that do to the current order of that complex?
We would just.
To do versus not. When, when would this impact?
We would have to put it as a non-conforming, existing non-conforming use. And they would only not be able to rebuild if an X amount of like 80% or more of it was destroyed during a fire.
Burned down, it wouldn't be able to.
Unless, unless we have given exemptions to that as well. So it's a possibility they can still rebuild it.
You can't spare amount of those, especially the new one on Hood, are gonna stay there for quite some time.
Yeah, yeah. The one on Hood, six years old, that's gonna be there for a good 15 years.
I'm thinking of some others that have got some age on them.
There's a pretty old one on a hood right next to the new daycare center that is in pretty bad shape.
Rich and more. Can you just explain to me what, I understand vertical mixed use, we described what horizontal mixed use is?
Just like commercial gear and then apartments attached to it.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
People just. Yeah, I'm trying, can you give me an example of what one would look like? I can't picture anything like that.
Yeah, there's not many good examples, are there? Not locally in Sandy at least.
It's more often on a larger development site where you have space for, say, a commercial pad, but then maybe in the back you have, you know, multifamily, say, behind the commercial.
Kind of, I'm home in a while, like about 21st. Retail, up front, commercial retail up front and then around the sides are the condos.
I might see that more like a village, like a village.
Is, is Toby that one? Toby has. Live at Toby?
I don't know. That's a, that's actually a good question, Pearl. That, that might be on a separate lot.
They could not live next to the.
They're not attached.
You're right. You're right.
I've never lived there.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I was just trying. So, so Kelly, going back to the buildings that we were talking about before Rich's question. If those buildings sold, would they then fall under the new code or would they be under the?
Yeah. They're, they're, they're non-conforming.
Okay.
And that, that runs with the land. That runs with the land. It doesn't run with the honor.
Okay.
And we, you know, just so you know, we have other, if you go to our non-conforming use section 1708, there's other things in there that once were allowed in different zones and have been removed and now they're just existing non-conformities.
So just so I understand, all the uses that, so, because you're talking about everything's hood, pleasant, all those. I mean, it's a huge area that you've got that map, you know, the pink area. I mean, it's every, can you show that? Yeah. It's that whole thing south of the big green, you know, it's, it's everything. And so what are we, are we saying that also is allowed, you know, duplexes, single family attached, all that? That's permitted use right now. Under C1.
I had to pull up the zoning code.
Yeah, just permitted uses duplexes, single attached, single detached, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, but most of those, if, if you keep reading, it says comma or not a comma, sorry. It says like single attachment existing prior to adoption of this code. So that's, that's a great case of an existing use that wouldn't be allowed today, but they're already built and we continue to allow them.
So nothing, none of those would be allowed at.
No, this, this has nothing to do with single family homes. They're already not allowed in the C1. We don't allow new single family homes. This is only for multifamily.
Okay. And so what I'm trying to picture is what does this area look like after all this gets done? And what I'm hearing is that whole pink zone in there is nothing but commercial with multifamily above it.
No, we're not saying that.
Well, I mean, assuming, assuming it all gets eventually developed out to what it was zoned as.
No, I would say the majority of it will just be commercial and there will be some lots with commercial with residential above.
Sure. You guys are saying the same thing.
I would say the majority, because of how finance works with mixed use, I'd say the majority will not be commercial with.
But I get Kathy's point wrong, but you were saying, you just want me to say that everything in that area is either commercial or that mixed use commercial with commercial with the multifamily directly attached to it. It's one of those two things. Nothing else.
I mean, I'm not saying that's great. I'm just saying, my concern is that like y'all, y'all kind of took away all the parking requirements. And so there's been this just big push to do apartments as we saw in Deer, Deer Point or Bull Run or wherever it's called. And so, you know, they don't, they didn't really like the commercial. They wanted to do the multifamily apartments. And so given, that's my understanding of what the market is, then I see this as being, you know, where it could be done and there's no parking requirements and I just.
You know, that's, that's not, that's not true. The code still requires parking for residential development. It just doesn't require for commercial development in the downtown.
Okay. Well, and again, it's just a matter of that given the push for apartments and it's a 45 foot, what, what does that translate to floor stories?
I, what I would, what I would say is that the code amendment that we're proposing, and the reason why I proposed it this way is because I thought this is what counts with favor.
Yeah.
Is that it is removing the flexibility for more apartments without commercial in the downtown. That's what it would be doing.
And I get that and I support that, Kelly. I'm just trying to understand, you know, what, what the developers will do with that, you know, because they've got a different, you know, angle on it and interest and understandable. So I'm just trying to figure out, so, so these could be like five story places. Is that right?
I'd say four would be the top.
45 feet is that?
You can build five with 45 feet.
Not with the ground floor commercial. Yeah.
There's no way.
Hard to do because you need more height for that ground floor to be commercial. So it'd be challenging.
Yeah.
How many more of these questions are?
There's eight.
I'm sorry.
I think this is one of the more complex ones, though, just seeing.
But I mean, are we dancing around the options? You have an option to remove it. We have an option to leave it in. Are we missing anything else that we should be considering or is that really just?
You want us to vote as we go along or what?
That'd be helpful. That'd be helpful.
We're, we're, we're calling council for a proposal that will be in front of us in the future.
I struggle with. Or I struggle with pulling for it right now.
We're not, we're not voting? We're pulling, pulling.
Yeah, we need directions so that when you get it next time in September, the code's written that.
There's a number of people that have not looked at this.
Yeah, me too. I think it's pretty, I understand the need to clarify and really figure out what we're doing, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's a pretty easy choice for where this council directionally has that. This is a recommended. Thumbs up.
I think I have.
For the most part, you'll see the recommended options are the options that is in the code. And so I think if you were to tell us, oh, we, we think you went the wrong direction, we'd want to know that. We want to fix that for.
We're pretty good at that.
And just so you know, the, the recommended options are what I it was my best guess at what I thought you would want.
Yeah.
So I might have missed the mark on a few, but that's what I, that's what we tried.
And Kelly, the plan is to have one more work session, right?
In September, yeah.
Yeah. Be another chance to discuss this.
And that, and that'll give the council, if you choose to, two and a half months or so to look at the 300 pages of text if you want.
So exciting.
Bee tree, really.
It was carrying on.
Okay, so the, the second question is, is related. It's also looking at the C1 and C3 zones. And this is looking, this has kind of more to do with addressing issues with the design standards. So there are pretty detailed design standards, kind of enforcing the sort of sandy style in downtown and in the village commercial districts. And that we, the attempts with this code amendments, again, staying policy neutral is to try it where there are discretionary standards today, where there are possibilities to leave them as is and not touch them. We tried to go that route. So when you, when you're thinking about a mixed use development, which as we just talked about, it's allowed. You can have residential as part of a mixed use development. And it gets a little bit tricky if you're trying to maybe apply a different set of, say, you want to apply the discretionary standards to the commercial portion of the development, but you can only apply clear and objective standards to the residential portion. That gets really tricky, especially if it could be mixed on the same floor. It might be a little bit more straightforward and we were finding it would have been more straightforward if you didn't allow residential on the ground floor at all. You still allowed it on the second floor and above. So you still allowed the sort of vertical mixed use development, but you wouldn't necessarily allow the residential to be just attached to a commercial business as the, the current allowance is in the C1 zone or beside or behind a commercial business in the C3 zone. So if you enforce that kind of separation by saying dwellings must be above commercial uses on the second floor or above, then you can continue to. commercial uses, uh, on the second floor above, then you can continue to apply the current, um, somewhat discretionary standards to say ground floor window requirements, entrance, um, detailing. Some of those standards are not entirely clear and objective today. And so, um, if we don't want to have to modify those as applied to residential or maybe apply it different set of standards, um, to those features on a residential component of a building. It's, it's much more straightforward to separate them. So getting to the, um, the options here on the next slide. So the recommended option is to, again, limit the residential development. So it's only allowed above a commercial business.
So that doesn't include horizontal?
Exactly. So no, the, again, the, we have kind of a further restriction beyond the one we just discussed to say it has to be above commercial business. Um, so that's the recommended option that's in your packet. The, uh, a second potential option is to keep the current allowances for residential uses as part of a mixed use development, um, which could be, again, the side or behind or attached. Um, but apply a different set of standards to just the residential portion of that building or that development. Um, in that case, it would probably make the most sense to apply the multi-family design standards. Um, but in that case, you're, you're ending up with kind of a tricky situation, both for staff to interpret and for applicants to kind of try to parse out what applies to what part of the building. Um, but that is, that is an option. That, that's an approach that some cities have taken in their codes. Possible. It's maybe not ideal.
I think it'd be very, it'd be difficult.
Didn't seem like it fits the clear and objective. It just seemed like it. It's like gray in the whole business.
I mean, based on the conversation you guys had on the first item, my guess is you're gonna go with the recommended option.
Keep it pretty simple.
Yeah. Just to clarify that you guys were kind of bringing in the sandy stuff, stuff versus the multifamily design standard. And can you, I mean, can you apply the sandy style to the commercial part and the?
Correct.
The other, that, that'll work?
That is, that is an option. What we've done in the sea, in the, um, village and, uh, sorry, what are they called? Downtown and Village Center Design Standards is to where, where they do apply or could apply to residential, um, to make them clear and objective. So just to modify them, sort of the minimum amount to make it clear and objective. Everything that we didn't have to touch, we just left as it's that we knew wouldn't apply to housing.
A lot of the standards, um, apply just to the ground floor. So as soon as you say residential's not on, can't be on the ground floor, you sort of solve that problem, uh, is the standard discretionary. It doesn't matter if it's not going to apply to residential and residential can't be on the ground floor and it's a standard related to the ground floor. No problem, right? So that was, that was kind of one way we were looking at the solution. Um, obviously there's kind of a hybrid solution if you were only concerned about whether the sandy standards, um, on the ground floor, on, in kind of major streets. Then you could, we could come up with a hybrid solution that says, well, it's still okay to have mixed use building where there's ground floor residential, it's attached either behind or beside, or maybe just behind. Um, but it's, uh, provided that the frontage on major streets is only commercial, right? So then you would get, you could still allow some of those other forms of attached multi-family. Right? Um, instead of just above, you could have it beside or behind, um, as long as those frontages were still had ground floor commercial. And so that was the other, like, kind of the hybrid approach. We talked about that after, actually, we come up with a recommended approach, which was the most cut and dried, like, okay, above the ground floor. And then we were like, well, maybe if you wanted to retain some of that flexibility, we can come up with a hybrid that would still protect the important commercial streets.
As I see it is, is that, that you have a number of current situations that have that residential problem and you're gonna end up having to question whether you're gonna put, apply a sandy style to it or not on residential, on the ground floor or, or not. So there's gonna be some complexity in this, no matter how you play it. But you're talking about new stuff, so.
Talking about.
We just stay away from the current.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, well, and I guess if somebody were to come in for a major alteration, then the, if it was, if it was a, if they're doing a major alteration of a residential building, probably on residential standard rather than, uh, sandy stuff.
I think so, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
And developer that came in out of arterial street on the front, front and side, but a, a not a main, if they're on a corner lot for say, they might want commercial on the front of the building, but then on the, on the backside of that building, wraparound residential on the ground floor because it's not on the, the main arterial.
Yeah.
And that would be more attractive to a developer who's got a small parcel on the corner who's trying to maximize their, their livability within that section. If you made it all commercial, just left all commercial, they, they're, they're gonna have to find parking for that residential on the backside. I just, I just think that might be a problem.
We're just polling here now. Because we're, I, I think you're decent conversation.
Yeah, so, so just a quick question. In thinking, so this does not prevent, say I have a commercial building with residential on top, and then I want to do like a rooftop bar as part of my downstairs business.
Yeah, there's nothing in the code saying that. So, yeah, if you have like, uh. If we get a rooftop bar proposal, we'll, we'll make it happen.
Okay, so generally no concerns with the recommended approach, remember? Okay, um, question three has to do with, this is another kind of permitted use question. And it has to do with zero lot line dwellings, um, which are, um, they, they can either be attached or detached and attached zero lot line is basically what we think of as townhomes. So they're sort of, um, attached homes on individual lots. Um, and then detached zero lot line is there, actually on the next slide, there's a graphic and it illustrates, yeah. Um, so that you basically move all the, the houses over to one side of the lot. So there's a zero setback on one side and then you have more of a setback and allows more of a certain usable side yard on the other side. So currently in the, um, single family residential zone or SFR zone, these type of zero lot line dwellings are, uh, minor conditional use. So a- again, as we talked about, you can't have just this discretionary, um, process for allowing this type of, of housing. Um, so again, you, you all have a kind of a choice to make. Either you can develop a new clear and objective path, and I guess we're getting into the options on the next slide. Um, you can develop a clear and objective path to make sure, to make those a permitted use and develop a, a new set of, um, standards. Or actually you could, you could pull over existing standards that apply in the other residential zones where they are permitted outright. But the recommended option, kind of following the same theme, is just to not permit those, um, those types of zero lot line dwellings in the SFR zone. So you could still have single, regular, single family detached, but no townhomes as a permitted or conditional use.
We never.
Turn them into a duplex.
That's, that's my question is that, you know, single family residential is supposed to be just single family homes. And then we got pushed into requiring duplexes. So townhomes were never an option. And so, so, so now we're still only talking right about duplexes and single family homes.
Yeah, duplex will still be allowed, but this sort of remove, if you go back to the previous slide, it'll remove, it'll remove the thing on the left. So you, you'll have to have setbacks. So if you, if you remove it, as we're recommending, each side is gonna have that setback. And what it effectively does is it, it's kind of density control a little bit, because you'll get, with this design, you can get more houses on less acreage. If you don't have setbacks on your one side of your house.
Um.
I personally think it's bad design and we have some in Sandy Bluff neighborhood and people get very confused and very upset when their neighbor has to basically what they would consider trespass in the east. Paint this side of your house.
People think it's middle.
To paint this side of your house, you literally have to go on your neighbor's property and there's easements for it, but I, I don't really like the design at all.
But the, the caveat that I, I'm kind of coming around to is that previously this council, again, I didn't support it, but allowed duplexes to be detached, which I don't even understand how that makes determination, the definition of duplex. And so now you can have a detached duplex, which is basically two separate houses. And then, and now you're allowed to, uh, subdivide it. So now you've got, instead of having a single family of seventy-five hundred, you've got two small, some small lots. So that's where I don't like that because I think that's, we've got a lot of already zones in that. So if you reinstated that a duplex had to be, uh, uh, attached, had to be attached, how would this affect that?
This doesn't affect duplexes. This is for a single lot of record with one dwelling. That's what a zero lot line dwelling is. Yeah, this doesn't really have anything to do with duplexes, just say no.
Okay, that's confused, because if you can have a detached duplex, in my mind, I mean, those are two single dwellings that you can then subdivide. You see, it's kind of semantics there. If you could subdivide, if you could build two detached duplex and then subdivide it, that's two dwellings.
So this is, in this example, if this was a subdivision, this is lot one, this is lot two, this is lot three, they're all different lots of record. They all presumably have different owners. All this would be doing would be making setbacks on both sides of the house. What you're talking about is you could have two units on this, two on this, two on that for the duplex provisions, but that's allowed by that house bill and that has nothing to do with.
They would still be subject to setbacks depending on how we.
Correct, it's correct.
We can't create setbacks that were new there, that's.
No.
But if it was attached, you couldn't subdivide it because it's not, it, it would be a zero light block line dwelling, wouldn't it?
It's, it would still.
No.
It would still be called a duplex.
Yeah.
If it, if it goes through the middle housing land division process, which is required by, by law to be allowed. Um, it's still considered a duplex even after, after it's divided. Yeah.
It is very confusing to understand, you know, definitely understand and appreciate your confusion. And because you're right, I mean, functionally it might feel like, uh, if you had a duplex and there's two attached units on the lot or, and, and somebody divided that through a middle housing land division, it's going to look like a two-unit townhouse built, it functionally, right? It's gonna be, each lot's gonna be, or each unit's gonna be on its own lot, they're gonna be attached. It is still technically a duplex, Kate's right. I mean, under the law, that's still called a duplex. This is a different set of provisions in your code unrelated to that. This, I think predates that close changes. Um, and it just says that these types of zero lot line uh, developments and it puts them through a conditional use process. And again, if you're gonna offer a housing type in a zone, it needs to be either yes or no. Can't be, it can't be a maybe. So, um, can go through discretionary process. So that's, that's the problem we're trying to solve is, and I, I understand there's this other confusing, and it would believe me, yeah, it is confusing. Um, but that, the problem we're trying to solve is really to just get to what's the best clear and objective answer in this particular problem. And I think, I generally, is there anybody that would like us to, like, change those from the recommended approach?
We only got, we only got about fifteen minutes.
I would love, we should just start with that question every time.
Okay, just.
Yeah.
Well, this one's a little bit less, maybe a little bit less straightforward, but, um, this is about transit street building orientation requirements. So, um, in the current code, the city, um, defines transit streets as arterials and collectors and other, other streets are identified in the transit plan. Um, and residential development has to be quote unquote oriented toward the transit street. So that's a current requirement. But that, what, what does it mean for a building to be oriented toward the transit street is kind of the, the clear and objective issue that we needed to resolve. Uh, so we, we created some, um, new standards for what it means to be oriented. So it means either face the street, that, you know, the entrance faces the street or it's, you know, within up to a forty-five degree angle from the street. So that was pretty straightforward. But part of what city staff have been interpreting the oriented toward the transit street to mean is that it's within a certain kind of distance from the street. So it's not set way back on the lot. It's not really oriented towards the transit street. So, um, on the next slide, yeah, with a recommended option is to establish a maximum distance or a setback between that building entrance and the transit street to say you're oriented towards the transit street if you're within X distance, which we haven't defined yet in the, in the draft. Um, and that would make that requirement clear and objective. Um, and would kind of be consistent with the purpose of those requirements, which is to encourage kind of active frontages, pedestrian friendly development. Question.
How does this work with the flag lot?
I think that's a great question. I think it's actually. I think we, I think we did add something about that.
Yeah.
As long as you.
That's a really good question. That's a really good question, though.
This section.
Oh, it, we already has one, exceptions for flag lots.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, it is in there. Yeah, but that is a great question.
Yeah. We're good with that. And, you know, we, we recommended some, or we're thinking of recommending somewhere in the range of twenty to thirty feet distance from the street as qualifying is being oriented. So it's kind of visible from the street, readily sort of reachable from the street, um, but not trying to be overly, you know, still trying to provide some flexibility between the minimum and the maximum setbacks.
Kelly, is that about what DeMarco wins right now? Well, although, you know, those houses that all have the garage in the back and the, they face the street up front.
Yeah, they.
Are they all about that?
Yeah, 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 I would say so. Yeah, and I think for the most part, when we, the code says it has to be a minimum of twenty. I don't think we really run into an instance where they, anybody's put it farther than like thirty feet.
Yeah.
But we're just thinking that it could happen where you set it way back and then it kind of defeats the purpose of the code.
Like somebody put a garage at the front of the property and the house in the back of the property or prevent that because the front door has to be.
Yeah.
Within, you know, twenty-five, thirty feet, okay.
And they could always request variance.
I think we're all gonna be okay with the new addition on this one.
Okay. Uh, uh, well, right. So thank you. And I guess you've all had a chance to read the memo on this. This is a change in, in state law, um, and how, and it is a little bit confusing changing, um, how one interprets, what it means to be a family and, um, having that, uh, not be based on, uh, the, the relationship of the occupants. And so we found a way to solve that. You all saw our recommendation, I think, which was to set a number of bedrooms, uh, as the distinction between congregate living and, uh, an individual dwelling unit. Other jurisdictions have done that, uh, as a solution to this same problem. We haven't seen anybody come up with anything better. Um, that's also, um, objective and isn't using the relationship of the people, the occupants. So, um, and without it, again, there is really no distinction between congregate living and household living.
I will add on this one, we had about a forty-five minute conversation, maybe longer with Josh. And with, this is the best we could all come up with. This was one of the hardest things actually in the whole code.
Yeah.
How did you come up with eight? I mean.
It's what other cities are using. I think, right?
Yeah, I mean, and also, you know, you start, yeah, it was, it was really hard, it was a hard call. I mean, and, you know, obviously if you felt like that was too high or too low, let us know. I mean, it's, you can change the number, the premises, though, they are gonna base it on bedrooms and so.
Bedroom house, I'd need more than one family. This still, though, doesn't allow for like people living crawl spaces and things like that.
No, it does not. That's a non-habitable living. Yes, correct, you're correct.
Yeah, I want to think about shifts too.
I will point out, you have a circular definition.
Oh.
So the fact that you're defining family as those that live in a dwelling unit, then you define dwelling unit in terms of things that are occupied by not more than one family means you actually have a circular definition. I want to look at that.
We'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
But is, is anybody against the eight bedroom?
Is this just in congregate living zone or?
No.
No, this is, this is saying if your house has more than eight bedrooms, then you're congregant housing. And the reason why is because we can't define what constitutes a family.
Is that the deal? Cause I, I'm trying to think of an eight bedroom house at this.
There, there, I don't think there is any insanity. And the largest one I know is like six.
But the, but what you would see, what this is intended to get at is if somebody wanted to build a congregate living facility and they were intending to build, say, ten bedrooms, twelve bedrooms, whatever it is, it could. It could go, it, if you don't have a limit, then that's actually considered, it's no different than a single-family house, right? Because it's, if there's no limit on the size of a single-family house and has a kitchen. A single-family house.
Would this be the slip-on scenic, the old hostess place, would that be? I don't remember how many.
No, because that's, that's actually, that is actually built as an assisted living facility, but this would, this would prevent somebody from. Basically buying a lot, putting in a twelve-bedroom house. And then turning it into congregant housing.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Or dorms.
Or dorms.
Yeah.
It's a very complex one. Or a show, yes, correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is. Okay, moving on then, uh, to a quick question about uh adjustments. So this actually came up later in our review process. And so uh, this change, I don't believe is in the, this one didn't make it into the draft, right? Or is it? Oh, okay, I have to speak. Yeah, this came up very late in our conversations with city attorney. Where we were looking at the city's review criteria for type one adjustments. And that's for um to vary up to ten percent. Problem is, the type one doesn't really work for the type of approval criteria that you're applying to a type one adjustment. Those are, are, are too much discretion on the staff. And so they really need notice to, to make that kind of decision. So our recommendation's really straightforward, which is just get rid of that type one adjustment. Um, there's no change needed to the type two because it was already up to twenty percent. So it just, it just really. Care of it. Um, and so I think there are recommendation, very straightforward. Just get rid of the type one. Any concerns with that one? Okay, great.
Again, I mean, so that means you can't have a type one adjustment, right?
So people that want adjustments will apply for a type two adjustment, which.
Go get noticed.
Today and gets you up to twenty percent, just like it does today. Then that's gonna change the opportunity to do a very, very small adjustment using the type one. Is gonna have to go away because the criteria have too much. And what's, okay.
That means you're giving too much authority to the director, is that what?
Without notice.
Without notice.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's not a problem to have authority and. If there's discretion in the decision-making order, a law typically requires that there's um notice and an opportunity to appeal. If there's exercise of discretion.
It's, it, that's exactly the thing, so it's allowing me to basically. Issue decisions on variances to our code without allowing anybody to comment.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah. So, okay, uh, let's move on then, so uh. Then Bill A, um, I don't know if you had a chance or familiar with this or had a chance to read the memo on this one.
It's awesome.
Right, so.
Exhausting, it's exhausting.
Is it going to pass?
I think so.
It did.
It's already.
It's, I mean, we're still referring to it as a December late because that's how most people know it, but it's, it's, it's passed, it's law. And it does require local governments to allow affordable housing that meets certain definitions and criteria. Um, in a wide range of zones and sites. Um. I mean, well, it, in, as I said, in a wide range of zones and sites, and depending on the ownership of the, yeah, it's, it's.
In single-family residential.
Um, there are some density uh and intensity requirements, so, and again, I don't wanna, I guess, I know it's not your. Yeah, well, and I'm, I'm being, trying to be mindful of your, your time here. Um, I guess the thing that's a little bit challenging about applying Senate Bill eight, so it, it applies right now. Coming and apply under that, Zach would apply that statute directly. Without it being in your code, because that's the way it's set up. Some jurisdictions have found that that is difficult to do because, you know, they, they wrote it for the statewide. And there's, it doesn't answer all of the questions that a planner at the counter might face when somebody comes in and actually applies. And so uh, we've got a heavy written uh code section that helps, is intended to help your staff apply that statute. The statute applies, that part's true. And uh, but it's really unclear and there's some gaps and like, how, well, how, what does it actually mean? There's some density bonuses, height bonuses, it's hard to know what those mean. Um, in, in city stand zones and which zones get what? And what about zones that don't allow housing? Right now, so we don't know what the density is, how do you calculate that? So our recommendation is to go ahead and include something in the code just to make life easier. It doesn't change the effect, that's in effect, right? So it's only. What, you know, whether you want it in your code or not, as a, as a way to. Hope, you know, if it does, if somebody does apply. And they want to make life a little easier, but you know, you don't have to.
And we are getting inquiries about it already from two different developers.
So, you know, I don't understand enough about it to even make a recommendation. I'm very concerned that, you know, they can put in a huge shelter in a single-family residential neighborhood without, you know.
It's not a shelter, it's.
Whatever.
Apartments.
It's affordable housing, yeah. And, and because what was considered needed housing is now off housing and, and it's that kind of special. I just feel like, I wish we had, we could hire some consultants and I get that we're not supposed to be putting together anything that, you know, doesn't follow the code. Or doesn't follow the new law, law that's coming down. But I want to see some consultants who can take that and understand where, you know, the, I, if this was happening in high density, which we have a bunch of. That's fine, that's where it belongs. But to, to allow all this to happen everywhere, high, to, to have our density, our minimum lot sizes and our, our maximum densities in these zones. Thrown out completely.
So here's. Here's. Guys, if I, if I, I agree, I agree, but i- if I may, I, I think what Kathleen's asking for is kind of what is in the recommendation, right? I mean, well, well, what I mean by that is just whatever this new chapter is that applies to statute. It's gonna have to come in front of this council, listen back and forth with our staff to approve. And so what I'm hearing is, is you wanna look at that statute and figure out the best way to address that in our community. And that's exactly what creating this chapter would do is develop our, our way of implementing that statute in San.
That's a hundred percent correct, and if you don't adopt anything, then there's no code provision on density or height.
Right.
So they can, they can choose anything and I cannot.
That's in the, yeah, in the non-residential zones where there are no density standards for housing. Um, under, if, yeah, if you apply the statute directly, they could say, well, there's no limit on density, so we can build as dense as, you know, the site allows. But as we've interpreted that sort of missing provision in the statute, we added a density. Standard that applies that the maximum density for the median density R two zone. So that, that is an, an actual kind of different outcome based on the current draft. As we've drafted it and then proposed amendments, that would be different than if someone just came in, if you didn't adopt anything into the code.
Are you saying that, are the densities that are currently in R one still hit, apply to this?
They apply except you get a density bonus of two hundred percent. So you could double density, and that, I mean, honestly, if you, if you chose to sort of disregard that and develop your own. Standards, I think an applicant could probably make the case to Luba or whoever that, you, you know, you're not following the statute and they could do, they could do what's allowed.
That's crazy, but the, but the essential question in front of us is, do we want, and no offense to you, Kelly, I love you, I trust you. But do we want Kelly just having to figure out how to implement the statute? In here, or do we want to move forward with a chapter that lays out very straightforward for how Kelly and the staff should implement this?
The statute, I think the recommendation is the way to go, right?
And I am getting inquiries about this already in Sandy.
Wood zones.
Our C two zone.
But just a minute, with just a minute.
Well, mine are with a moratorium.
They, they know about that.
Just a minute left, I'm gonna touch on, um, one last question, let me very quickly talk about, um, you know, our schedule to come back to it all. So uh, yeah, we've got tree removal um for park maintenance, and so there are some existing exemptions related to tree removal. And uh, in kind of looking at this section and talking to city staff. Uh, this recommendation here is to add a new exemption. Um, from city-owned parks and natural areas, trail installation, maintenance, safety improvements and general park maintenance to allow. Uh, so basically just to create an exemption, so you're not going through a permitting process and, and internally. Anything to add to that?
I would really like to change this so that our park staff can go remove trees and say mining in certain areas and they don't have to get a tree permit. It's just.
Can you, can you say existing trails? Cause I, I can see where that might go to, and I don't wanna put more stuff into the.
I mean.
Is it intend to be existing trails?
It'd be any trails.
Any own park or natural area.
Yeah, they would still have to get a, a permit if it was like within the, within a certain distance of our creeks. And within like a wetland, but that's like a DSL requirement.
Right, right.
But otherwise, if it was like an upland tree that was dead and Tiana and her crew just wanted to remove it, they can just go, they can just go do it. They don't need to check in.
What if we have a, one of our neighbors wanted to do that to their house?
I read it's a city-owned park.
Yeah.
I hate those standards.
Yeah, I think.
I hate that we get, you know, not for us, but definitely for you.
I definitely understand and appreciate that, but with limited staffing right now, it's, it's, it is a pretty big burden on staff.
So what do you do, cause I, I have.
Right now, we're processing tree permits.
Excuse me, though, I mean, I wasn't required to get a tree permit when all those cedars had to come down because PGE butchered them, so. Right?
Those are in the right way, I believe, though.
Well, no, it was, it was based on the size of my lot.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Okay, and so similar to a park.
That's true, that is true.
A big area and a lot of trees, you're gonna have to break a few eggs to make the.
Yeah, you're correct, I'm sorry.
All right, I just don't like the devil standard, I agree with the fault.
And then also, does this a, address the need to maintain John's viewpoint's view? Given that you're four hundred feet from the river.
No, well, potentially. I don't know, that's a good question, I'll have to look back, I'll have to look into that.
Well, no, we need work. You should enhance it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
I thi- I think it would.
If you put maintenance in there, I would think so.
I think so too.
Yes, I think it's an existing viewpoint or.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good question, but I, I think we would, yeah, we would include that.
And I would add trails like Carlson into the roads utilities, trails from.
Fix assignments. Thanks, I'm just making sure it covers.
Yeah.
So do you want us to give you kind of just the general um next steps, just for a couple of minutes here?
Yeah. It should just take a second, yeah, so I mean, basically, I guess, we'll be back in front of you um. To talk about the proposed amendments um for another work session in September. And um, following that work session, we'll be making final edits. And then aiming for hearings November, December, we're hoping to wrap this all up by the end of this year.
Perfect.
That's our goal, so.
We wanna get it done.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
Just do, so, for that, thank you very much for your time.
Sorry, we're always a rambunctious group.
It's terrific, so, uh, a really good question, so, yeah, um, I think. About the summer to look over that lovely document and of course, if you have questions for us, reach us through Kelly, it's probably the easiest way.
Thank you to the Plaid Association members that joined us this evening, really appreciate it. Uh, we're gonna close our work session, we will convene our council meeting at seven ten, thank you. Let's go ahead and call the city council meeting in order, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. My nation under God, universal with liberty and justice for all.
For all, excuse me. All right, I'll do a quick review of tonight's agenda, I'm gonna be calling for any cha- proposed changes to tonight's agenda. I will then go to public comment, Jeff, did we have anybody submit online? Not online, all right, so we have two submitted um for public comment, I'll be calling your names at the appropriate time. And then we'll have a response to the previous public uh comments, that was by Bill Leslie, we'll have a response from staff uh to that at that time. Then we'll get into our consent agenda, our consent agenda has our city council meeting minutes from our June fifth and June twelfth meetings. The adoption of uh financial sust- sustainability plan for parks and rec. Sanding and advisory board appointments, requirements for street closures and exclusive use of mining park for the twenty twenty-three mountain festival. Loan authorization, drinking water transmission lines design. Contract amendment on for leeway engineering solutions, owner representative services. The adoption of city manager recruitment position profile and hiring procedures. Under new business, we have three public hearings, and so if you're here to speak uh for one of those public hearings, wait till this time. Um, uh, for the public hearings to testify, don't do it during or earlier. Uh, we have public hearing for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four master fees and charges. A public hearing for a revised moratorium raising limits on our new wastewater connections. And a public hearing for tran- our transportation systems plan. Well, then I have a report from our city manager and we'll end our evening with our committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Pastor Smollett.
Here.
Pastor Sheldon.
Here.
Pastor Walker.
Here.
Pastor Exner.
Present.
Pastor Hufnissin.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Here, thank you for that, Jeff, with that, I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Hearing none, we will move forward to public comment. Um, the first step for public comment that I have is Nancy Becker. And Nancy, you'll have three minutes, uh, Jeff will let you know when you have.
Can I wait till later?
It's, it's about the, the.
Oh, it's about the fees, so we'll go ahead and wait for the fees at that time. With that, uh, we have Michael Jenkins. Um, Michael, uh, you will have, will provide five minutes of testimony. Jeff, our city recorder will give you a twenty-second uh warning, so when you have twenty seconds left. And I have your information here, so if you'd like, uh, you can.
Speak of the mic.
At the mic, that way it picks up what you're talking about, so you can either, oh, this mic can get you.
Right here at the table.
Yeah, it'll hear. Absolutely, sir. Welcome.
My name is White Jacob. I'm a US Marine Corps vet. Been in your town for a year and a half, homeless. You haven't heard a pee party out of me, you haven't had one complaint about me being homeless in this town. Now, I've been through a lot of stress in operations, I've had my gallbladder out. I've had a double hernia out. My gallbladder was in me for three years because they couldn't give me health insurance. Get me in, almost died. I had my heart done, I've had six inches of my leg. Now I got third-degree burdens on my leg. They put me in housing over at Father's House. And then they got me into the, to a motel, they put it up, put me into the budget. Over on McLaughlin, been there for forty-nine days. I got pictures to show all you guys that I lived in a pigpen. Didn't pick it up or nothing, no cleaning, no nothing. Ben Law's going in there, I ended up with Ben Law and me. I had a detox and abort mission to get out of there. Now the people that have given my housing and stuff, they're supposed to have a twenty-eight thousand dollar. Two bit, whatever kind of mole home I'm supposed to work in, this, this grand money that we're getting. It's supposed to pay for it all, me and my dog will be happy. But what I'm coming tonight to tell everybody about is I need help now. I don't wanna be in crack alley, I'm not a crack man, I ran against Ted Wheeler for mayor. And I am a man out there on the streets, I worked with the homeless, I take him, many of them off. And put them in places, and I use CBD herb and mushrooms. You got blue pills coming your way, you got problems, I got solutions. I'll sit down, talk about it, but my thing tonight is, I need help. I went to your office today, yours, to see the chief, to explain to him my issue. He wasn't in, I went to the next person in mind, this is officer right here. I said, where do you want me to sleep? Can't sleep at the bus stop anymore. Well, it seems like the other night, when I rolled in here after a sh- a sheriff on McLaughlin. Threatened to put a gun, a bullet through my dog's head. Because he's walking too close to me and I said it was a service dog. He's gonna. He's gonna willing to put a bullet through my dog's head. He's gonna put a bullet through my head. He talked to my caregiver, told him, he even said that. What am I going through? Why do I have to do this? You guys ain't got nothing in this town for me. Officer told me today, I gotta get tickets written on, you're gonna write me homeless tickets. Well, that's okay. I have an income. This dog is on, is hurt too. He's on medicine. He's on bed rest. He's over at the daycare. You know who put him in there? Me. My money. I'll do anything for my dog. You're not gonna shoot my dog. I need help reporting it. They got me help. They didn't give me, I will say. He did lead me to the ant farm. I went to the ant farm. The ant barn had fifteen people there in ten minutes to help me. He shows up with the county. Now tomorrow I get to see. The, 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 uh, the other, who is it?
So we're supposed to.
Resource through. I'm hoping disability so I can turn in these claims that I'm showing to you. Now I can cut off here. Mayor, I would like to have ten, fifteen minutes with you after, sit down, have a cup of coffee. I wanna show you my video when I went through at that motel. And then see what, I want you to see what I had to go through. And then you can decide, cause I asked to show video tonight and I was refused. But I respect that. My name is Michael Jacob, AKA Porkchop. I will be running for mayor the next go around, but I need help now.
Twenty seconds.
That's it. God bless.
Thank you. Um.
And I would like to speak on the water behalf. When you get to that, please.
So, oh, okay, absolutely. And then uh, let's go ahead and touch you if we can maybe set up that coffee. Uh, thank you for your time. All right, with that, let's uh move ahead in our agenda. Uh, we have the response to our last meeting's um public testimony.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, two parts to this response. The first, uh, I was not aware at the time that we had an issue with the um. Only accepting credit card payments and not accepting a cash or check for business license renewals. And so we have made some progress. Uh, are working on making some progress there to alleviate that. Rebecca has been doing case by case. Um, check payments for those that need it in the short term. And then we're working with the vendor to figure out what options we have as far as alleviating that to make sure that all of our. Business owners can renew their licenses um in a convenient way for them. And also, you know, gets us the, the revenue that we need in a. Sure, beneficial way, so.
Alright, thank you. And I'd like to thank Mr. Leslie for his public testimony. Uh, you don't always uh, you're implementing changes. You don't, you don't always see the unintended things or some kinds of things you need that to not do. And, and that's why we have public testimonies to hear how. The changes we make impacts our community. So if you're listening, thank you, uh, Phil, for your testimony and at least enjoy the engagement.
Mayor, there is one more part to that.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the cost of the rental license for a rental property. Um, the research that we have done showed that a couple of the cities in Plaquemines County charging were from fifty to a hundred dollars, ours eighty-five. There are a handful of cities that don't charge anything for rentals, but we're kind of, you know, middle of the road of those that do charge. Um, Mr. Leslie didn't think that the council was fully aware of the rate increase when that uh was adopted last uh December. Uh, and we pulled the staff report. It was clearly identification staff report prior rental uh license amount. Then we updated. Proposed rental license now. So we feel confident that, you know, we provided you with the entirety of the information that you needed at that time. Uh, of course, the council would like to revisit that rate for you to do that, but at this time, uh, we're kind of middle of the road for those uh Plaquemines County cities that do charge.
I have a comment about that. Do you want to wait till the fees come around? We'll talk about fees.
Uh, I'm sure you can ask a question.
What did they get for that? Like then, we don't go around and eat and, you know, do code checks or, you know, anything like that rentals. I mean, do they even see us at all for eighty-five dollars?
I don't have a good answer for you off the top of my head. I know that, you know, from a um. Business license record keeping perspective, it's nice to know what properties are rentals. If there are issues with, you know, tenants, uh, police can get involved and contact the property owners. So that's one mechanism. Um, we also can then cross-reference in the utility billing software with those. Uh landlords so that if, you know, bill is unpaid, you can make sure we have the correct contact information to get hold of the property owner. Um, but beyond that, I have to reach out to somebody. Here's your information.
Thank you. All right, if that, we'll move ahead to our consent agenda. Um, unless there's uh questions or discussion, I'll.
I'll make a motion to adopt, adopt the consent agenda.
Sir, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion from Councilor Smallwood and a second from Councilor Exner to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving ahead uh to new business. Um, I am going to open um this public hearing. It is seven uh twenty-two PM. Tyler with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the council's fully aware that we like to uh review our fee schedule annually and bring that back at the start of the new fiscal year to make sure that the costs that we are charging for services match. Um, the actual expenditure related to those services. And so what I'll do tonight is just run through sort of these different categories of fees. Um, I don't think there's anything too much shock here as we discussed uh most of this during the budget process. Uh, and so with that, I'll just jump right in. The first section of fees that we're updating or proposing updates to are miscellaneous fees. And you can see they're pretty uh low dollar amounts here, just trying to get. The fee schedule updated to the cost of printing for some of those larger documents that they are requested from the public as well as um updating some copy charges to fifty cents to reflect the actual cost associated with. Providing those services to public. I don't agree to interrupt as I go. If you have questions on anything specific. Uh, the next category of fees that we're proposing to increase would be the planning and building fees. Uh, last year we did a two percent increase, which was closely tied to uh CPI. We're proposing a six percent. Uh, to these categories of fees. Um, again, tied to CPI for January to January of twenty twenty-three. That six percent was sort of carried through the budget in various spots as well because we typically tend to tie things to CPI to make sure that we have a constant uh for baseline of measurements. The one item to note here, two items to note, I guess. Uh, the first is that. Um, you know, I think probably the first question you would ask is how is this going to impact uh a building permit? It's about three hundred and fifty dollars more for the average single family home permit. Um, and then second item to note is that the state of Oregon requires a forty-five day notice before we adopt. Fee changes for building and planning fees, building fees specifically. We noticed the state on June fourteenth. And so because of that. Um, we can't formally adopt the building and planning fees tonight. We'll bring that back at a later date, but. Part of the state's requirement is that we also hold a public hearing. So we wanted to tie all these together in the public hearing and give everyone the opportunity to provide the public comment. We can still provide written testimony um up through the end of July. And then we'll bring that back at the August seventh meeting just to adopt this one section of fees. Uh, next is water rates. And so as the council's, you know, very aware, we have significant reinvestment going on in our water system. Talked a lot about that during the budget process, the different projects we're gonna have going um throughout this biennium. And I believe the council saw the updated rate model several months back, uh, but there's no significant changes to that. Uh, model since the last time you saw it, which indicated the need of a thirty-six percent rate increase. In water charges effective with this upcoming fiscal year. And what that equates to, to the average customer is anywhere from ten to twenty dollars per month. You know, we, we use the baseline of seven CCF, generally speaking, when we talk about the average customer. And so that's. Um, you know, we'll be consistent there. It's fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents would be the monthly increase. Um. And to help offset that rate increase, we are, are proposing the addition of a reduced um water rate program similar to the wastewater utility assistance program that we have currently. And so this would adopt the new rate increase of fifty percent of the regular rate. So that increase will only be about seven dollars and. Sixty-five cents or so for uh the average customer if they were on the reduced rate program. That's forty-three customers currently.
So, so, cause the, the sentence starts with the proposed changes also include the addition of reduced water rate for a single family home with three. So, is, is that something that's only applying to the folks that are on the assistance program?
So, we would basically, if you're enrolled in the wastewater utility assistance now, we would automatically enroll in waters. We don't need to do another application process or anything like that. The three-quarter inch meter is the vast majority of single family homes. Um, we can't really propose a change to a multi-family unit. Because we don't have a way on our end to determine if there's one member that would qualify versus another tenant that wouldn't qualify. So this gets the most bang for your buck as far as, you know, the most eligible applicants.
Yeah, just that whole sentence though kind of implies it's applied to everybody.
Oh, yeah, that, that's not the intent. It's just three-quarter inch water meters.
But everybody has those.
They would have to meet the same eligibility requirements as the.
Right, but yeah. My point is, the sentence doesn't say anything about the eligibility of, of, of the assistance program. It just says.
Gotcha. Um, for clarity, it would follow the same program guidelines as the wastewater assistance program. It would just be changing the title on the application. To water and wastewater utility assistance. Any other questions on water?
Yes.
Okay.
Um. Why, so Skyview Acres, just looked it up to see who they were. Why are their water rates? A dollar fourteen. Versus everyone else is there. Four sixteen going up to the six dollars.
So.
It's one of our wealthier.
That's been a ongoing uh contract that we've had. We've applied the same rate increases um. You know, to them as every other type of account. Um, but I don't know the backstory on how that rate was initially determined. I can absolutely do some research there to figure out.
That would be fantastic.
Is that like mountain shadows?
No, it's Virginia porridge in the court. Hence my question.
I guess someone lives there. Interesting. But yeah, does the mountain shadows and all those other folks that get some water from us pay different rates? That'd be a good question.
Yeah, so we have the wholesale rate, which is a little bit more expensive than the normal single family home payer. Um, which is, or some dry up like now, I think those two big ones are um Alder.
Yeah, Alden Creek.
And there's one other one that I can't think of now off the top of my head. Um, but those fall under that wholesale category. All right, uh, next up is wastewater. So similar story here, lots of capital uh investment that needs to happen in that system. Uh, the rate model that we've been working off of, although it's been revised a hundred and eighteen times, literally. It. Uh, shows a sixteen percent rate increase that's needed. And so that would bring the average uh residential customer to about eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents more per month. Uh, again, that rate increase would be effective on the upcoming uh July twenty twenty-three utility bills.
That's on wastewater. Seeing none, okay.
Uh, stormwater, again, this was presented in the budget process. Currently, the stormwater fee is five dollars per equivalent residential unit. Uh, we're proposing a three dollar increase to um up to eight dollars. And that really, you know, helps rightsize the stormwater budget, starts paying off the debt that's uh recently incurred for the emergency repairs that we had. And so this one is, is um an important structural step to make sure that the stormwater fund remains solid going forward. And next up on the list is Sandy Net. So we're not proposing any changes to the normal. Uh, fiber service for Sandy Net at this time. But council might remember that last June, we added a couple of multi-gig services. With what we thought were competitive rates, come to find out they're a little bit higher than our competitors. And so we're not having anyone taking those services. And. In order to remain competitive on those multi-gig services, um, uh, we're proposing a slight rate reduction on the two gig and five gig service. In addition to that, we are working on developing or have in process um the capability of offering ten gig here soon. And so we need to establish a rate for ten gig service. And because the ten gig installation is a little bit more um time consuming and high level than the standard uh installation charges, we'd be proposing to change the installation for ten gig service to three hundred instead of just a hundred dollars. And then libraries, um, uh, small changes here, some rate reductions, actually. Very rarely do we get to um talk about rate reductions, but you'll remember during the budget process again. Uh, Sarah's mission, uh, and then really the whole library networks mission of reducing fines and ultimately trying to go fine free. And so this proposal would reduce the maximum overdue fine from five dollars down to a dollar. Um, and that change is already reflected in the budgets. There's no budgetary impact of the reduced uh revenue there. And then last, but certainly not least.
Hold up a quick question.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
So, uh, it's, uh, we've, we've crossed out the cultural past. So are we doing away with the cultural past entirely?
My understanding is that there's just no charge for that. I don't believe the cultural past is being discontinued.
So are we giving special privileges?
As far as.
No overdue rates to certain people while other people pay overdue rates?
I don't believe so. Um, I'm not quite sure if I understand the question though as far as.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering what the cultural past is, I guess. And so I'm, I guess, right there, um. And hence, and hence, are we giving special privileges? If you have a cultural past, you don't have to pay an overdue fee that everybody else does. So that's, that's all I'm getting at.
No, the cultural past, um, I don't know the whole listing of things that it can, can get you access to.
Okay.
But there's, you know, a variety of.
I mean, I assume it's like a social.
You know.
Museum.
Yeah, yeah, right. That's, that's what I figured. I just, if we're not doing overdue, I'm just wondering. That's all.
Yeah, uh, no, I, I think the question.
Superb, my question.
We are discontinuing um that, that daily, that daily uh. Overdue rate there as proposed. Um, I haven't heard of an issue of it being significantly misused or held overdue. Um, or you know, held uh for a lengthy period of time, but I can definitely follow up on that one as well.
I'm sure it's not that big of a deal, I was just.
Appreciate it. And then, um, so last but certainly not least, Parks and Recreation. Um, so last meeting, June fifth, the council. Uh, during the work session received our presentation from Rochelle and John. About the fee structure changes that they were proposing to make based on the financial sustainability plan that was just adopted earlier this evening. And so these updated fees reflect those changes that were presented at the last meeting. There was some discussion about maybe a higher um. Initial hourly rate and then a lower rate for subsequent hours after that to capture, you know, the upfront cost of, of rentals. We opted not to make that change in this go around because we are gonna be revisiting this on an annual basis to really sort of get to the root of. What do we need to do with Parks and Rec to make it sustainable? This is the, you know, vital first step in that. But as you may recall from the last meeting, we also are, you know, working on the time windows of certain shelters and, you know, do we have enough availability for the general use versus, you know, just the reservations at the peak hours? And, and so this is our first cut at um sort of a revamping of the whole infrastructure in that department.
People know.
Yes, we'll make sure that we have the information on our website about the repairs and then we can throw up some signs at the various shelters. Well, no, it is a pretty significant change in task practice where it's meant for us to come for a service. So we'll make sure that we get that message out. Yes. Thank you for that. And with that, uh, Mayor, I would just recommend that um you hold a public hearing, uh, receive any public testimony and. And shut.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move ahead uh with public testimony for this. Um, if you're online, please uh use the raised hand button if you wish to testify. If you're uh in our meeting via telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand. Uh, if you're here in person and you wish to testify, please raise your hand. You'll be provided three minutes each. Uh, you'll get a twenty-second warning um from Jeff. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. We'll start with Nancy. And then uh we'll get to Michael.
Rachel. Uh, Nancy Becker at one four five eight five Bluff Road, um, here in Sandy. A storm drain fee. Um, is increasing by three dollars. And I have been told that it will be increasing to ten by next year. Uh, that would be twice what it is now. We don't even have a storm drain in front of my house. We have a ditch. It drains into our side lot. Why am I being charged ten dollars or soon to be eight dollars or possibly even currently now when? There is no storm drain in front of my house. there is no storm drain in front of my house? There's nothing. Everything that comes down from the church on down and in front of my place and into my little side lot that I also own. Also, what can a senior citizen on a fixed income do as far as fees go? I believe you were mentioning that there was an average increase and it's minor, but it turns out to be a hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents per year. My neighbor who lives directly behind me now has her daughter and son-in-law living with her because after her husband passed, she can't make it on her own. And she is not happy about the fact that she's having to give up some of her house. Sorry, but I love her. Um, everything is going up except for social security. Water use, um, oh, sorry, I can't see. Um, but yeah, sewer is going up. Everything else is going up and I have some other questions. Also, PGE pays to the city of Sandy. Cell Service pays to the city of Sandy. I see city of Sandy in a lot of my regular bills. And so it's not just from water and property taxes or, you know, garbage that comes through here. I don't know if garbage gets part of the pay something to city of Sandy or not, but anyway, you normally don't see me here, but whenever he drags me along and offers me ice cream on the way home. You know, otherwise I'd be at home with my Yorkies. Thank you. But yes, the major thing is the one eighty-three seventy-two a year. That means a lot to those senior citizens. And yes, I alone with my husband are both now considered senior citizens and on a fixed income. And so, yes, I do hit safe ways to hit what's on sale. I do not buy anything that is not on sale except for my Yorkies. Gotcha. That is the only thing that I support, John. And so anyhow, fees, they need to go someplace rather than up all the time. I'm sorry. I am sorry. But I have a lot of friends that live in this town.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, Michael, we'll do the same drill as last time.
Let me move this chair for you, sir.
I didn't spike chickens. I lived for the last year and a half right down here where the park is, right above the park, Dan Hughes' house. Right there, looking right over the park. Last year and a half. I'd take my wheelchair and go down to Steephill. Yeah, crawl all through the dirt and just bark. Now there's a house right down there below me that has two senior ladies in there that had heart attack. They brought their ex-husband, he's a senior, in there. And they got wood in their front yard from last winter when the cherry tree fell on my my band during the snowstorm. We rode into the city hall. You guys sent me a letter back saying it's an accident from God. Well, that accident from God is my home. That destroyed, three hundred dollar deal, that's all. Fix it, it done, done solution. But what I'm saying too is, you got problems in that park with the trees. During all these storms, those trees were crashing down. Thirteen trees have been down in that, down there. We had one at the end of, what is that street he lives on? I'll give you the street, but there was a big tree that fell down, hit one house and hit the next house over there. We were out of electricity for five days. While that five days was going on, I couldn't use my breathing machine, couldn't use my back machine. Brooke Dan was wife, was contacting the electric company and they couldn't even come out with a power source to get me stuff to breathe. I mean, we need emergency dance for these elderly. When the power goes out for two or three days because of these fires, we gotta go with a solution. You know, also, I want to put on the table that Rose City Lab on Johnson Creek will do any kind of water testing. They'll send them to your, to everybody in Sandy and they'll do a test and so you know what's going on with your water. With all the drainage and stuff, even his house. We, the the neighbor next door to us, when all this happened, that neighbor up ahead of us built this building. Don't know if it permitted or not. But anyways, when the building went up three houses down from us, that water went down and flooded the basement down there. When it did that, it soaked the park. Just made it a sponge down there.
Twenty seconds.
I, I would like you guys to talk more about that and do more investigation in the park trees. One of these kids get killed, God bless.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony.
And I make nine hundred dollars and I'm on social security. I get a hundred and seventy in food stamps. That's what I get.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, with that, I will now call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate that all of these changes were proposed or discussed during the budget process. And so our budget has, has been adopted and effective since the last first includes these changes.
Yeah, Kathleen asked a question.
Nancy did bring up a good point where I kind of a lot of it is, what about franchise fees? Are they part of this or separate? Are they going up?
These, but those are totally separate. Those, depending on the provider, are either negotiated, not negotiated, but identified in like the franchise free agreement, like garbage, for example, we have a sole, you know, exclusive use agreement with them. And so those are not being modified at this time, although the rates from those other providers are also increasing. We're all, you know, seeing PGE increases or Northwest Natural increases. And so because it's percentage based on what we get for franchise fees, we will see additional revenue coming in because the rates are more on on the other provider side, but we're not changing the percentage rates on.
Is there an opportunity to change him like we've changed it for all the residents?
We can definitely explore that, sure. I think there are a couple there, I believe, are set for maximums, so we need to, you know.
Great, thank you. All right, unless there's further questions, I will.
Yes, just want to respond as well to Nancy. And I, and you represent everybody out there who doesn't want to see a pay and or a rate increase. So you're representing a very large number of pretty much everybody, right? Nobody wants to see a rate increase. I just want you to know that we have spent the last, I've spent the last couple of years and several of us in various committees and the council itself, especially around water and wastewater, trying to understand our current situation and trying to understand what it's going to take so that the fresh water continues to flow and that the sewage is properly treated in a way that doesn't bankrupt the city. And the terrible truth of it, to my own surprise, you know, when I came on council was that for many, many years, the the rates have not been collected to basically adequately maintain the system. It's like buying a car or any other house and not doing any maintenance on it. You go enough years, all of a sudden you're facing just this massive update and that's where we're at. And it's terrible. And people are like, well, why are they still going up and where? The sad part about some of these rates, particularly wastewater today, is we are still not recovering the true cost, even as high as this new rate's gonna be. It's not quite where we have to be just to pay our own way moving forward. And that's, but the impact to people whether on fixed income or not, it's it's huge and we acknowledge that. And I wish there was a different way. The mayor has done a phenomenal job and our consultants in terms of trying to get grants. We've got our our public works department has acquired very low interest loans. But when you're faced with those kind of jumps, you don't really notice it. So I just want to know, it's it's top of mind. But it's also something that we feel like is very, very necessary to, so to speak, keep lights on. So.
May I also say that today I just got my PGE bill and it said thirty-four dollars for a distribution fee. Distribution.
I understand.
Sorry.
No.
Yeah, oh, we can take public testimony, sure.
Brad Becker, one four five eight five Bluff Road. It was on the increases in water and sure, you're showing thirty-six percent this year. It is a biennium. I just wanted people watching to know it's two years. So thirty-six this year, proposed thirty-six next year. The same with the, with the sewer, twenty-six, I believe, this year, twenty-six next year. And then when you compound them, that seventy-two isn't seventy-two, it's seventy-three to seventy-four percent. And the same with the, with the other. So I just wanted to clarify that it's going to be doubled up again next year.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, we'll be.
Is there a motion to close the public? Insert a second.
A second.
Motion by Councilor Walker and a second by Councilor Exter to close the public hearing. We're now in discussion. Was there, was there a vote? Oh. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nays. Motion carries for now and the discussion.
Well, I hate rate increases for one, but I know we need them and I think I did a great job explaining that we're paying for past mistakes today. And I I heard our constituents say that they don't even have a sewer in their yard and because for the same for kid, for parents that don't have kids in school anymore paying school fees. It's, it's just part of what we have to do for our community to live and I'm gonna support, I'm gonna get you to support this rate increase because city is saying.
The only thing I would, and I agree both counselors, is that just reminder that we do have some opportunities for those who are on cost assistance, I call it fixed income, to get a reduced price. As long as they qualify. I think that's, if you're in that kind of boat, we should just base for the city. And I know they've been open about giving those kinds of discounts. So don't forget to do that if you are in that kind of a condition. I represent some of those senior folks, don't have a fixed income yet, but I get the part about needing to look at what your future is when you're getting to be kind of old.
All right, and any further discussion or a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt the fee increases for.
Insert a second.
A second.
The motion by Councilor Exter, a second by Councilor Hopkins to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, master fee and charging schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nays. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving ahead to another public hearing. I opened this public hearing at fifty PM for resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. And I will now call for any abstentions from the hearing body. Hearing now, I'll now call for any conflicts of interest from the hearing body. All right, Josh, you want to give us a staff report? Welcome, by the way.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you know, the city of Sandy has had a development moratorium in place since October of last year. And at the last city council meeting, city council approved a consent decree to settle some outstanding enforcement issues with EPA and DEQ relating to the wastewater capacity issues that were the basis for that moratorium. Purpose of this agenda item is to align the terms of the moratorium with the consent decree and also to make some other changes based on staff's experience with the moratorium to date. The general result of approving this measure would be to significantly loosen the terms of the moratorium that's currently in effect, most significantly more than doubling the amount of additional flows that will be allowed from new construction under this, these changes versus the existing moratorium. The moratorium in front of you this evening also provides that city council will reevaluate it within six months or when we have the results of the stress test that the wastewater treatment system is currently undergoing, whichever is sooner. And we do expect the results of that stress test this fall. In addition, I received from Councilor Walker a few questions this afternoon. I just wanted to make sure to cover those. There's a question about the language about middle housing, land divisions and duplexes. That is a clarification under the existing moratorium. It says that we're allowing those to go forward when the duplex is already built. The the new language in front of you clarifies that could actually happen before it's built. This doesn't have any impact on whether a duplex can be built or not. It's just a matter of the timing of the land division. And that land division, the only effect that that land division has under Senate law four fifty-eight is regarding the ownership of duplexes. It allows for a person who who occupies a duplex to loan, own the land underneath their duplex versus having that land be the same land underneath both units of the duplex. There's also a question about why annexations are proposed to be allowed under this new version of the moratorium. They weren't previously. In discussing that with staff, the original reason to not allow annexations was more of a messaging and a avoiding confusion issue rather than a liability issue. Not wanting to create a expectation that because you're annexing, you're going to be able to develop your property. But it doesn't create a vested rights problem or a, or a ninety-two oh four oh problem for the city to allow annexations. And allowing them would allow for some of these developments to kind of start, take these potential future developments and start taking those initial first steps towards being able to develop in the future when there's capacity to allow it. And then finally, there's a question about the language about septic systems. This is not changing anything about when septic systems are allowed or not allowed. It's just saying that if you are in one of those very narrow circumstances where you're allowed to have a septic system, that the moratorium would apply to you because you're not impacting the wastewater treatment system. Happy to take any other questions, but staff recommendation is to hold hearing and new moratorium that's presented.
Move ahead to public testimony. First, I'm going to provide some guidelines to those who may wish to speak. First, public testimony needs to be on the topic of the public testimony. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, it must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. All right, to offer public testimony, there are three ways of doing that. If you're online, please click the raised hand button to let us know that you wish to testify. If you're here, please raise your hand when it's time to testify and I'll call on you for your time to testify. And if you participated via telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand in wait to be recognized. Oh, then I call each person to speak. Each person will receive up to three minutes to testify. And the city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. All right, with that, I will now call for anyone who wishes to testify. Okay, so you're anyone online yet? I'm married. Don't see any raised hands. All right, let's first go with you, Mr. Becker.
My question. Greg Becker, one four five eight five Bluff Road. I see we're wanting to increase the, I believe it's EM, EMUs, okay, from one hundred something to three hundred. Will this increase the amount of money taken in by the city? And if so, how much?
I don't.
Could that affect your budget?
Well, will definitely affect the budget because what basically what this is, is more that, that's the increase of people that are able to. Hook into our.
Correct, with the new development center.
So that will allow more developments to kind of, right?
Developing, so yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is, at some point, yes, it'll, it'll increase the revenue we have coming in. Uh, unfortunately, the ERUs that are proposed in this.
Sorry.
Our property tax rules for very many more years, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just, just curious because it gets more than double. So whatever we're taking in now, I would imagine it would then be double.
It will take more in fees, it'll increase uh, the property tax, you know, revenue that comes up from receiving as well.
Okay.
And also, we usually issue about eighty to a hundred and twenty building permits a year. And so this three hundred is, you know, could be for the next two years or so, depending on how many applications we get. So it's kind of just allowing for some of the normal building permit issuance that we've had all along.
No, it just kind of brings up lots of other questions.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Appreciate it. All right, Michael, you're up. And remember, we're talking uh, a moratorium for housing here.
Housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, the voucher is eighteen hundred dollars. That's what the, that's, that's what's on the plate. And that's supposed to pay your rent and part of your like bill. You know, I told him today, I want my voucher right here in Sandy, Oregon. So I'm gonna be big, I'm gonna be paying all these fees that I'm seeing. And how am I gonna do that on nine hundred dollars? I ain't. You know, I want, you know, and, and I want to say something about the wastewater and stuff. I'd like to see. Look out of the box and maybe hire an outskirts. Person to do your water testing, your asbestos. All that can be done at Rose City as. Right now, there's licensed and everything, ready to go. He's doing all the water testing. I think Sandy needs it. I really do. I took some samples around Sandy and already ran it through the lab. We have a problem. With a lot of stuff, but I'm not gonna bring it up tonight. When you talk, get your construction guy, you get ahold of Dan Hughes over at Rose City Lab. We can help you out. We're about to finish the environment and everything else. We can do soil samples and all that, Rose City Lab. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right, with that, uh, I lost my spot. Um. All right, with a staff recap and recommendation, Josh.
The uh, moratorium resolution in front of you would. Uh, enact a new moratorium to align the terms of the consent decree and make the other changes that are outlined in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you. I will now call for a motion to close the public hearing. We can motion to close the public hearing. Insert a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Sheldon, a second by Councilor Bates to close the public hearing. What? What do you guys think? Should we vote on this?
I just got a question.
Oh, okay.
When is this, if, if this passes, when, when does it become effective?
Immediately.
I mean, that's it.
Yeah, that's just a memory. Close public hearing. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. All right, motion carries. All right, uh, we're now in the discussion or additional questions?
Can I just make a motion to adopt?
Yeah.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. A second.
Right, there's a motion by Councilor uh, Smallwood, and a second by Councilor Walker to adopt uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody, for that. Uh, moving ahead, guess what I'm doing? We're opening another public hearing. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four at eight PM. I will now call for any abstentions of the hearing body. I'll now call for any conflicts of interest from the hearing body. All right, Kelly, you're up with the staff report.
So this is kind of the, hopefully, the final step in a, oh, I don't know how many years we've been doing this project. Um, at least three or four years, it seems like. Um, and I, I'm not gonna go into it. We. Really long-winded here because we just had a work session recently. I then went to planning commission. Uh, and they're recommending approval of the ordinance and the TSP that's before each night. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to consultant Ria with DKS Associates.
Hello. Hi. I just need to get on my phone because I have. Uh, thanks, everyone.
So the last time you were here now, you can only drive twenty-five miles per hour everywhere. Ria, do you need any help with the slides?
No, I got it. I've gone up.
See, she's been here so many times, she's feeling comfortable with. This project's been the never-ending one.
Now I need to call into the. Does anybody know?
And if you like, I can share the slides too.
I guess I should have. Well, I was trying to join the meeting.
They're quick, ones of people.
All right, I just need to share my screen now. Hold on, a million clicks. I get where I want to go. Wonderful. All right, thanks, everyone. And you guys have a very full agenda tonight, obviously. So I am going to zip really fast through some of the first. Slides, because I think it's stuff you guys know. Um, so as far as our process, um, again, I'm not gonna read all these if you guys have questions, but this is. A bold list of why we're updating the TSB, the current ones adopted in two thousand nine, it's fourteen years old. There's a lot of plans um, that we need to incorporate. And things have changed a bunch since then. Um, we're looking at addressing congestion, making sure we have a strategic investment plan, um, grants. Make sure you guys set it for grants and also there's a development code update that comes with it. Um, here's a quick schedule. You can see, as Kelly said, we're at the very end. It feels good to finally be wrapping this up. And this only goes back to September twenty twenty. I did not want to have a wraparound, wraparound, wraparound schedule. That shows everything that we've been doing. So this is just like, yeah, the last eight months. Um, of course, we've had a bunch of public outreach. We had a community, we've had two community surveys, and then we also had a table at features test. Um, some input from the surveys, this is what was important to them. And I don't, I'm not gonna throw all this, but congestion comes up a lot, driving comes up a lot, safety comes up a lot. Um, we had asked the community about some high priority projects. Um, the bypass came up as top number one and three. Projects, Debarco two eleven, um, and then some connectivity improvements in the southwest part of town. And then highway two eleven on its own were several, were themes of improvements that people would like to see. So any questions on that? I know that was fast, but like Kelly said, we just had a work session. And I know you all did journal workbooks. All right, so I'm gonna jump right into priority projects. Um, again, we have nine goals that we developed. Everything that we are identifying as a priority are always reaching back to make sure we're advancing these goals for the community. Um, yours just shows, yeah, we work from the vision, the goals. Uh, we came up with valuation criteria, looking. With all of the issues that we have at the city, you know, what are the long list of improvements that we could do? And then again, reaching back to those goals. What should our priority solutions be? And also based on what we can afford. Which comes up to the funding shortfall. That's probably the theme for tonight, what we'll probably talk about the most. Um, if we take all of our TSB projects, they add up to seven hundred and ten million dollars. Uh, but to be fair, three hundred and ninety million of that is the bypass. And those are all in today dollars. Um, so if we take just the high priority projects that came out of our initial screening, that's fifty-seven million dollars. And looking at the twenty-year forecast of revenue that's coming in and expenditures that will be going out. We roughly have ten point eight million to spend for, yeah, and. I will get to your question, Jeff. And I read Kelly sent it to me too. So, um. What we do in, through the TSB process is we will have two packages of projects. One that we call the financially constrained project list. That's what in Oregon we call that. That's what can we afford with that ten point eight million dollars? What is our priority that we're gonna spend on? And then everything that's left over. The, the seven hundred and ten million dollars, we put that in what we call an aspirational project list. But I will clarify. Uh, we are required to do this for a TSB just so we are having conversations about what are our priorities and making sure that we have a financial lens. When we're making that decision. But other than that, um, you can go after a grant on anything. Does not matter what list it's on. If a development comes in and they have frontage improvements or an offsite impact. They will also build that as a mitigation. It does not matter what project or what list that project is on. This is just showing that we've given some financial thought to what our priorities are. Uh, and then I'll get, um, Councilor Walker's question. So what went into our financial estimate is. We worked with the city and we looked at the last five years of all transportation revenue that came in. So that's your portion of the state gas tax, right? You have a local gas tax. Um, there's a registration fee that you get from Clackamas County. You collect transportation, some development charges, you've won grants, like there's other things that come in that to do. But then we also subtracted out all the expenditures based on your fiberage averages, which are your maintenance and your personnel. And any other expenditures, streetlights, um, all of that gets subtracted out. Um, so of that ten point eight million, most of it, over nine million dollars. Is what we're estimating the city will collect with their transportation system development charges. So when we do our twenty-year forecast and we estimate what we think the traffic volumes will be like in the city. That's based on some land use projections, the growth in households and jobs. Um, so then we assume that if that amount of development happens and we apply your system development charges in today dollars. This is how, how much we could expect. And we know that escalates over time, but so do cost estimates, right, for all the projects. Um, so yes, we're not spending any of this money on maintenance. Like, we're not stealing maintenance money. That's what, um, Councilor Walker had asked.
It's getting used to it's stealing.
Yeah. Well, we are not, you know, using.
So yeah, that was my concern is that, you know, our road maintenance fund got depleted.
Not at all.
I had related to that was, um, oh, we've taken out the bond payments for three sixty-second.
That's all just funded. That's in its own pocket over here. And then you also did have a question and it'll come up. I'll get to it in a second, but. The ODOT, so we did ask ODOT for a not a promise estimate on what they possibly could maybe. Spend on their facilities in the city, you know, where we know. Um, and they did give us a number, it's right around a million dollars. Um, and you will see, we do list ODOT as the leading agency on all projects that are within their right of way. Because they would have to be the lead. It's their road. Um, but that doesn't mean there would not be obviously a cost sharing. If there's something that's really important to the city, um, and ODOT maybe doesn't think it's as big a priority. In the future, there would be, you know, some sort of cost sharing that we'd have to come up with for though. So that's why they're the lead agency, but they are by no way saying. We are going to a hundred percent pay for all those projects. Good?
Thank you.
Sure, yes. Good questions. Nice to know them in advance. So I'm just gonna go through these a little quick. So these are all of the projects that we are putting on that financially constrained project list. Based on conversations I've had in work sessions with the public, um, and then with planning commission hearing that we've had. These were the top of how we would like to spend that roughly one, or ten point eight million dollars that we have. So, uh, there's a couple pedestrian projects. Um, they add up to just under two million dollars. And they include, uh, three hundred and sixty-second, doing some sidewalk infill. Fairly long, it's, it's almost a million dollars a sidewalk infill. And then several times, uh, project P three, we've talked about infill of some pro- sidewalks on Bluff Road as well. So those are included. So I guess that's it. So any question on the sidewalk infill projects? And then there are quite a few roadway crossing projects that total up to one point three million, though the majority of these are covered with a, is it still pending, Kelly? Or have you?
I haven't applied for it yet.
Oh, but you're, okay.
Yeah.
A future Safe Trusts School grant, um, that the city feels extremely confident that they will be successful in winning. So, and then, and that is included in our rev- revenue estimate as well. We're not showing them as funding because we don't a hundred percent know. Um, but these are not part of the one point eight. We assume they could be funded by the Safe Grant, Safe Trusts to School money.
And based on previous conversations with the council, I think it was around the budget hearing process. I believe that's what it was. Um, it sounded like the council wanted additional considerations for. Starting some additional conversations with the school district to find out what their commitment would be towards the project before I apply for another grant. So I think that's, that's why I'm not proceeding yet. I think those conversations seem to occur first.
No.
Okay. And you'll see, most of these are fairly low cost and we'll get a little bit higher, but they're all. Curve extensions marked crosswalks, appropriate signing for crosswalks by school. Some of them are, um, like flashing beacons depending on the condition. So it's, it's a lot of just traffic calming and, yeah, crossing improvements around the middle school and around the elementary school. There's more of them.
And around the library as well.
And around the library as well. Yep. So the, so those are all the crossing projects. Any question on those?
The one. The, um, Bluff Road one. And so real, reallocate existing roadway space to provide buffered blue bike, bike lanes.
Which project number?
Oh, I'm sorry, C seven.
Okay, thank you.
About to reallocate the space for bike lanes on twenty-six. And so that's between Bluff and three sixty-second, is that right?
Bluff at twenty-six, wait. At three, C seven, right?
C seven.
So it's Bluff Road, on Bluff Road, at, at the highway. So not by three sixty-second.
Says. By, by, provide buffered or separated bicycle facilities at the intersection crossing.
For C seven, though, I don't.
Yes, in the middle description part. Third set, third line down in the description.
Modernized curving sentence, pedestrian skill, lighting, oh, separate, or bicycle, sorry, I, now I found it. So yes.
So are we getting rid of one of the lanes for that stuff or? When I, when I ask somebody else, they thought that was, that the ODOT had come and said that they were interested in bike lanes from twenty-six to three sixty-second.
Oh, well, so this is on Bluff Road, right? Not on the highway.
So, but again, at that intersection, if you're planning, I mean, are you getting rid of one of the turn lanes or something to do these bike?
I don't think so.
That is not the intent, no.
I think it'd be restriping the lane limits.
I think it would be narrowing the lanes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think, you know, we, we would definitely not be promoting losing.
Well, there's not enough lanes to lose.
Yeah.
That, that's, that.
The, the other project.
Do it in Portland, just get rid of the lane and pay it free.
So the, the other project you're talking about was something that ODOT was interested in. I think they even came and spoke before the council, like pre-COVID.
Yep.
And I actually just re-engaged with them on another project and they didn't mention it again.
Don't re-engage.
No, it was about something else. And they said, well, we might proceed, we might not, who knows?
So.
Don't bring it up again.
No, we were talking about something.
Other issues than bikes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the next group of project or driving projects that total up to approximately seven million dollars. I'll go through these a little bit. Um, so D three is the twenty-six through sixty-second drive intersection improvement that you all know, that's, um. Already through design, under construction, and I'll be adding that north. Leg. Um, D six is Highway two eleven at Proctor. This one came out, I believe, through our work session. People have commented that it's really hard for, um, the northbound approach. The northbound approach is too far for the westbound left to turn. So it's a, it's a very cost-effective fifteen thousand dollars to restripe that intersection. And make it better for truck maneuverability. Um, D nine is Highway two eleven at Debarco, um. Which is tied, and I'll get to that, it's tied to D twenty-seven. They're kind of twins together. Um, D nine is the actual improvement project. We set aside half a million dollars for an unidentified project there. We're not exactly sure what we need. D twenty-seven is the project that could do the study. Um, I know this intersection's been a high priority for council, planning commission, and the public. Uh, it's pedestrian crossing, bicycle crossing, vehicle crossing. It's a safety issue. Um, just the level analysis that we do, we've done for a TSB, we know in the future, you know, it would benefit from a roundabout. Or it would benefit from a traffic signal. Uh, but because of the grades, it's not an obvious just plug-in and improvement and, and a walk away, we don't think. Um, so we would like to study it more. Um, so we would like to study it more to make sure that we're moving forward with the right improvements. And that and that includes digging in a little bit deeper, like with the civil engineer help and actually taking a look at what it would take to be so. The way this is set up is we could look at it through a study, which is project D twenty seven. And then once it's determined, this is just a placeholder for five hundred thousand dollars. To cover whatever type of improvement um, would come out of that. It it's a bit of a an estimate, right? Because we don't a hundred percent know what it would be, but we want to make sure because it's a high priority that it is included in our plan. So any questions on that? No? Okay. Um, and then D, let's see, D fourteen A, fifteen A, um, the Bell Street extension, which is funded the. Three hundred and sixty second drive extension to Bell, which is funded. D twenty is just um. The extension of Debarco at twenty six, um, which we've we've talked about as well over to Vista Loop. Let's see, some of these are just roadway connections that are even in the current plan. That D twenty one F is the Village Boulevard extension, which is over by Cascadia Village Drive. So we want to make sure that that. Collector extension is included. Now, D twenty four is highway two eleven, uh, roundabout at Gunderson. I know the city currently has a consultant on board. To start the preliminary design, I guess, full design of that with the cost estimate. And if you remember, there's some background with the developer paying some money towards that and.
Yeah.
Spend a certain amount of money, about a certain amount of time.
Yeah, and there's, there's ongoing, we're still looking at that. It might, right now, we've identified it as a roundabout, but it might turn out to just be turn lanes. We just don't know yet until we get a actual official cost estimate.
Yeah.
But it will be, there will be improvements to the intersection.
Yes. Now, let's see, D twenty seven is the study that I talked about towards um, two eleven to Barco. And D thirty one is setting aside a million dollars for future planning for the bypass to keep that moving. Based on, I think, council recommendation from an earlier meeting. Um, and that's it for the top driving projects. Any questions on those? Yes, please.
Um, so like the the Debarco Road extension, you've got three point nine. And but the the funding source talks about developers and partial S D C credits. And so. Why would we be including like for a four million dollar project that then we would be, but the developers would be paying for or the S D Cs would be paying for?
Oh, which projects? Oh, D twenty. D twenty. Well, I will say, yeah, this gets a. A little bit confusing because we're all the the transportation system development charges will be coming into the city, right? But then the city does have to give some credits back when they pay them. Um, but. When we typically do a T S P, we don't account for the credits because we don't know what that's going to be. So we're. We are trying to keep this somewhat high level and not get to such a level that we're making so many assumptions. On, you know, decisions that may not happen for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years that it's then. I don't know, we're so off base, I guess. So we're trying to keep it high level. So. We're, we just wanted to be shown that it could, some of it could be frontage improvements, right? Depending on what type of development, like if a developer comes in and builds all of it, or it could be frontage improvements on a collector that already exists. We know that there's going to be some funding by development. Um, but they will also all be paying their system development charges would also be covering it. I answered your question on the way, but it's hard to have that crystal ball to know exactly.
For any of that. Other than S D C credits.
Yeah, uh. Not most likely not.
No.
Yeah, because they would, they'll be constructing it. Excuse me, they have to construct it to local street standards and then anything above and beyond that. You you know that, then they we have to give them credit. I think I know what you're asking. So there there is a chance that. It'll cost less than that.
Yeah.
And then out of the eight, ten point eight million, we'll see some savings on that one. And then that money can be shifted to another project that's currently not on the. Yeah, that's currently not on the financial constraint. So I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, and the flip side is costs go higher, go faster and L skate higher than we were thinking. Yeah, that's part of that crystal bar ball piece. Very good question. Anyone else? Uh, there's three safety projects that have been identified. Installing an adaptive signal system on U S twenty six. Uh, that would be, again, we're expected to be funding by ODA on that one. Um, just extending the adaptive signal that you have. So that allows the traffic signals to be more responsive to current conditions and not just run like on a. On a timing plan that someone said this is what Saturday at noon is supposed to look like. So when it's Memorial Day and it doesn't look like a typical Saturday, the signal system is. Smart enough to react and help people scoot through. So. That's a, that's a good one for safety because the safety aspect is there's a lot of people either make bad behavior when there's a lot of congestion and a lot of rear end. So it really helps with that. Um, and then U S twenty six, um, at Tenac Road, I believe that also came from a council workshop. Um, just because some some concerns with. Traffic near where all those businesses are all in the driveway. So this sets aside some money to take a look at that in more detail and see if there's something we need to do, either. Closing driveways, consolidating driveways. Maybe there's a median or raising access manager or something like that. There's some strategies there that could could help with safety, so. And then the third one, um, I think this one's been along the whole time, doing a speed zone study on U S twenty six on on the east side of town. So we set aside some money. For that as well, where the city could with ODOT to get that done. And we could see what the appropriate speeds could be out there, especially with, you know, the new development that's going to pop out. At Debarco across from the loop. Um, we're going to see, you know, more movements out, I think, on the east side. So it's a timely study. Any questions on those?
That last part, I just.
Oh, sorry.
We had talked about the the opportunity to have to do speed limit reductions on a larger basis. Remember?
Yep.
Like bluff and stuff.
Yeah, so the state does have a. And we've emailed, I've been emailing this half a little bit about it, but the state does have very strict requirements on how speed limits are set. There are statutory speeds that you are allowed to put up with no study. And that is twenty five miles an hour below and then fifty five or higher. Um, anything between that, so thirty to fifty, um, if that is the appropriate speed, you have to do a speed study following the state's. Guidelines and approved by the state before you can do that. But some cities do pass an ordinance that we're just going to have a statutory speed.
Oh, sorry.
Twenty five, but.
But that wouldn't affect the ODOT facility.
Oh, absolutely not. This is.
So yeah, this would be, even if council did decide to adopt that and all your city streets are at twenty five. This study would still be needed because the ODOT is, the ODOT facility would be.
I thought you were asking beyond that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But where, but where are we budgeting? Let me just more correct towards Tyler. Where are we budgeting to be able to go through that process and do those studies for key areas in town?
There's probably some flexibility within the street fund to do some of those studies. Remember transferring six hundred thousand of the ARBA dollars. That's coming by any of the sort of price size that's now be twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to some studies.
Well, I'll say, ODOT does them for free. Other staff time to request them to do it and you have to wait and get in line, but there's no charge for the state to process those.
So it would be great for, I'm sure Jenny, I don't know who's off the case for this. I'm hoping I'm not. But to prioritize, um. Let's allow ODOT to do some and get in line for that for the last priority areas. And then maybe we take on the rip, the ones that are really concerning for council to make sure that we're getting going and prioritizing and getting those done.
So the the state won't let you do them yourself unless you go, that's all the rules just changed about a year or two ago, that used to be the state could only do them. Now, cities are allowed to do them, but you do have to go through like, like a city staff has to go through training with the state. And then they kind of hold your hand while you do the first two or three, then those get approved.
And that's change it from thirty five to twenty five.
Yes, that's a change of thirty times twenty five. And then after that, you can do them on your own. So just to be transparent.
The staff available.
Okay.
But it is, it is.
Councilman has volunteered.
It just takes a long time. Well, there's planners. It's a little different than the.
Fifty thousand dollars taxpayer dollars versus not spending anything. I think that's pretty significant. So that's why I said let's prioritize, right? Let's allow ODOT to do the ones that aren't that big of a deal. But if there's some that we feel really. Intentional about wanting to tackle like reduce speed on Debarco, you know, um, not Debarco on two eleven, right there, right? Like let's prioritize the ones we thought like is worth us doing that. But the ones last, to your point. We'll send them ODOTs, but that's that's what that's. Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. And this is just the figure showing all the projects that I just. Described to kind of helps geographically to see where they're at. Um, I did not want to leave out transit projects, um, though these reflect the transit master plan that. You all adopted a couple of years ago. We did want to make sure that they were included. Here, um, to show that we are looking and coordinating transit. It's one of the important modes that goes with walking and biking and driving as well. So those are all included in here. Though all of the funding does not come out of T S P funding transit. As their own funding. And then I did just want to let you know, there's a couple of changes that have. Occurred in the T S P part of the presses today, since you guys got your packets. They're pretty minor, but I did want to let you know. On page forty three, we did add reference to um, highway two eleven to Barker Road proportionate share fee that you may be familiar with. The city um, has collected or is going to be collecting from a couple of developments. So we wanted to make sure that was noted as a funding source. In the T S, well, as one of the things that funds transportation, that's not included in the ten point eight, to be clear, and it is clear in the text. Um, and then it's also a part of appendix L within the T S P. And then on page forty seven, um, and on page forty eight, we just for that D nine project and that D twenty seven project with both. Refer to highway two eleven to Barco, the improvements and the evaluation. We just made some updates to the description and the cost estimate to make sure that those were clear as well. So the text just got a lot longer because people were a little bit confused by how the two went together. So. I know you guys haven't seen this before. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions about the proportionate share fee that I mentioned? I know I've talked to the planning commission about it, but.
And just so you know, part of the reason these are out of last minute is because of a meeting that we had last week with a developer.
Who will be paying this fee.
Yeah, so we just wanted to have the extra clarity.
For the future, so you guys can collect your fees as as we would. Any questions on that? And we do, we have updated the T S P. So there is a new version that includes all of this we have tonight. Okay.
And that's going to be established, uh, established where in our website, I suppose. So people can see it. We can access.
So all these changes, uh, that we are talking about, I think they're all included in the packet. And then, yeah, once it's adopted, hopefully it's adopted tonight, and then we will put it on the website.
Okay. All the corrections.
It'll be, it'll be the corrected version, correct?
All right. And then, um, as part of the T S P update, we had a sub consultant, um, M I G. That was working with us on making sure that the development code was up to snuff and was consistent with anything that was coming out. Of the T S P for recommendations. Um, so they did a pretty detailed look at anything, anything transportation related and T S P related. They wanted to make sure they were eliminating any discrepancies because there was some language in the between S D Cs and the updated T S P. So that was fixed. Um, they also put some more multimodal objective and recommendations language in there to make sure you're getting the improvements that you want. Um, eliminating vague and subjective language. That's always important, right? We want to make sure that the terminology in the T S P is the same in the, in the development code. Um, and then, yeah, just ensuring future transportation is supported by the planned transportation system, making sure like all the standards match. Um, and then with that, just letting you guys know that. There's an S D C amendment that you guys will be seeing in the future. You'll be looking at if you want to increase your rates for transportation. After the T S P is adopted, because we have an updated project list.
Okay, wait, see, you say S D C.
So the, so this has caused a lot of confusion. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, so we could say S M C, which is Sandy municipal code in the future. I agree. I I think it's very. It's okay. Two different thing, two different S D Cs.
The planner, but yeah, they wrote this slide, not me. Transportation related code amendments will be coordinated with future code amendments for housing related modifications. Yeah, and you guys are going to see a pack in on that in the fall. But it, I was also true that you guys are going to update your transportation system development charges now that you have a new project.
And so when does that happen?
Uh, this year, they're, you're working with.
Yeah, we're in a contract. Yep, soon as I get this adopted and we've got this all set, we can move forward on that. And with that, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move to public testimony now. Um, yes, yes, sir. We're almost there. Uh, I got recent headlines first. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It's sufficient to say that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all. You say, if you have documents, um, maps or letters that you wish have considered by the body, they must be formally displaced. In the recording of this proceeding, to do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials recorder at C I dot Sandy dot or dot U S. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. All right, here's a public testimony opportunity. If you're online, please click the raised hand button in order to testify. If you're through the phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. If you're a hearing person, physically raise your hand if you wish to testify. Yes, sir. Uh, one second. Is anybody online? I don't see anybody saying. All right, Michael, you get three minutes here on the topic of uh. Our trans- transportation system plan and you'll get a twenty second warning when you're done.
My name is Mike Jenkins. If you go down here right out of the, out of here. You go past Joe Donuts. And you go into that intersection, now you're heading down the hill. To go down to the park. Does everybody know where I'm at? Okay. That part is the most dangerous part of this whole mountain over here. Me crossing right there. Is bad. Now, down the street. I've been hit and run. By going into Gateway Bar to the back end over there. I got hit and rammed, knocked in the ditch with his dog. Got a five hundred dollar bill for my bet bill and I got. I've been through surgery. The mountain going down, the trash cans. You gotta find a better place for them. From Thursday, Wednesday through until they're empty. And then it's another two days, so that's four days out of the week. I have to go out in the street with my dog to come up the mountain. I can't move all the trash cans. That needs to be approached. Crossing. Over there. From McDonald's. Or Bymark. Over. You have to go. All the way down. Go across. And then come back up and get onto the bus. That's all difficult. Problems there. The handicap ramp over here, it's a coffee shop. If I don't have my dog, I can't get up. And that's code. I like you to look at the code. Some of it we can't. The, there's spots like going over here at the transit center. Going from up, from. Where the bus is up to the bathroom. Sidewalks all tore up. And there's multiple spots in the city that you can. And I would be willing for the city to walk. With who wants to go and see about a handicap pass get through the city. That's all I got to say. God bless. Our street that we live on over there has. Probably fourteen children on it. Living on the street. Up on the corner where the bus stop is. There's, it's not safe. They come whipping up, whipping down. They're not, most, there needs to be more signs for these bus stop deals. And they need a bike path. Out of there.
Twenty seconds.
I'm good.
Thank, thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other public testimony? All right, I'll now call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Yeah, I I will comment on a few uh, things that the um. Public testimony just covered. I do agree that there's some sidewalks that need to be repaired throughout town. Um, and that will be one of the things we're going to be looking at when we have the new code enforcement specialist. I've already noted a few, um, it's just going to take time to go through those, write letters and then follow through with enforcement. As you can imagine, sidewalk replacement is actually one of the hardest code enforcement violations to tackle because it's time consuming and expensive. So, but it is, it is on our radar and list. So thanks for the comments on that. Uh, I do want to point out a couple of other things that were brought up there. Um, right over here from Joe's Donuts down the street to Mynik Park. I do agree that that is not done properly. And that will be when the pad town homes go in, which we're still working with them on their plan revisions. I just talked to the developer today, actually. When that goes in, that's going to all be fixed at that point. So that is in the works and I, I'm hopeful that that will happen. So that is in the works and I, I'm hopeful that that will happen in the next year or two, and I do agree, it's not a good situation. The one other thing I will comment on is the crossing at Buy Mart and Industrial. That is something I think we, it is worth looking into more. I've actually noticed them myself when I was jogging around town during COVID. That the crosswalk over the, along the highway actually is on the opposite side of the street than the transit bus stop.
Correct.
So it is, it is actually something is, it was a really good comment and it's, it was on my radar two years ago and then it fell off. And so that's something we will talk to Odal about.
There was a thing on that stretch right there, if you go where the pizza parlor is, the sidewalk ends there on this side. There's no sidewalk. I got caught on my wheelchair, my dog at the end of the sidewalk. And we had to go across against traffic up there. I'm physically blind. That's why I'm a service dog. That's all I gotta say. Look into that area.
And the, and the one last thing I will say that that just reminded me, when we did do the walkability study in downtown Sandy, I think you were part of that, Carl. When we did do that, we actually did have people with both physical impairments and vision impairments. Go along with the walking groups and that's some of the recommendations that actually made it into that document, which are being adopted as part of the T S P. So we, we did do that in our downtown at least, so. With that, I, the only other thing I would say along the lines of a staff recap is that I would just recommend approval of the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Kelly. I'll now call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Take a motion to close the public hearing.
For a second, second. Motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Hopkinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed naves, public hearing is closed at eight thirty-eight P M. Ready for it? Yeah, right. Motion? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Would you like a first reading?
Jeff, but read fast.
It's a very short one. Maybe this is, or this twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three City of Sandy Transportation System Plan.
All those in favor of the first reading, signify by saying aye. Opposed naves, motion carries, take it a second reading, please.
Yes, mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three City of Sandy Transportation System Plan.
I will call for a motion to approve this one, for a motion to approve the second reading. Motion by Counselor Walker, second by Counselor Exmer to adopt the second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed naves, motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Kelly and your team.
Thank you, Ria.
All right, report from the city manager. You appreciate it.
All right, I've got a couple of exciting things to talk about tonight. My, my one meeting record of some two hours is now shot. I'll just take up the next twenty minutes or so. Just a reminder that we have the longest day parkway this Thursday, six thirty, Forest Oak Park. Hopefully we'll see you all there. Similar, you know, setup as we've had in the past, passports and trying to get everyone at every booth to. Talk to all the departments and staff that we have here and learn about what we do. Are you really gonna wear a bee shirt?
I am. Tonight, really?
All right.
And I will not be cooking.
Now, we begin stunned by these.
All right, so if we haven't been to this particular event before, where do you want us and when?
So there is a, you have as much of a role as you would like to have, but yes, there's a role. So there is a admin slash council section, hot dogs, ice cream or two.
I man the barbecue.
I'm sorry?
What time is it starting?
Starts at six thirty. My job.
There's spots for people to volunteer. Yeah, I do the, I do the barbecue. There's somewhere to, there's usually ice cream to hand out. Carl is usually hanging out with the bees. Laurie's usually with the firefighters.
And then we're also the end of, we're, we're ahead of the passports, so if you want to be in the raffle, that you can.
But if there's, there's also, if there's a city department that, you know, you wanna go hang out at, you can go hang out at that department's area or go over to ours.
It's a good event, yeah. Reminder, we do not have a council meeting on July third, but the city office is closed on the fourth, obviously, for the holiday. So no meeting on the third, but the fourth of July fireworks all scheduled and ready to go. Thanks to Rochelle and Carol and that team down there. As far as I know.
Don't look at me.
I did, did you notice that?
A different chief on July fourth.
And that week really kicks off the whole Mountain Festival event, so we'll have the parade on Thursday. If any of you are interested in partaking in the parade and haven't reached out to Jeff or Rochelle's team, please do so. There be a grand marshal at the front, I know the mayor's planning on being at the front, that was my understanding. But if you'd like to, you know, tag along with the city department, we'll have that option available too.
Feel free to not, you can.
Exactly. And then, shout out to Greg, thanks, you know, we had the, some homelessness issues next to the library with potential Wi-Fi problems. He spent his time yesterday sort of rebuilding the Wi-Fi network, so to speak, so we're hopeful that that issue has been resolved. We'll contest that and make your stop, maybe I'll be right home tonight to see if the Wi-Fi is working or not, but. We, we heard the concern from the council members and that seriously, so thank you, Greg, for making that a priority this week. And then last but not least, the, the special service contract program. Some of you may be familiar with that, it's a grant program that a couple nonprofits are recipients of. And it's gonna be that time again for a review for those applications. Last time the panel was Mayor Polio, Counselor Walker and Counselor Exmer. We're gonna keep the same panel or would you like to change things up?
What was it for again?
The social service contract program.
Require some sort of report out from those beneficiaries of those grants.
Yeah, so the old program guidelines were loosely followed. I think we sort of. The council had a desire to tighten those up, having annual report provided. I could check in on the steps.
See, we'll have that in hand for us.
Reports.
That's great.
And that's it for me.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Don. I just want to say. A recommendation that maybe we pull board appointments out of the consent agenda moving forward, just so we can recognize those people who bother to. Take the time to apply and go through the interview process and be selected and we can give more, you know, thanks. Especially if they choose to attend at the beginning of the meeting potentially, so. If any of those diehards are actually listening tonight, I just want to say thanks for the Sandy Net people who interviewed and. I'm willing to, to join that board. Second item, I, it was, it was interesting to listen to Mike here talk about his. His issues with mobility around town, given that we've talked about the T S P so many times. And it's, it's just interesting with that different set of eyes will point out that we might have missed or frequently missed. And so, thank you for that and.
Are you guys counting a wheelchair in the service dog going down the road?
And I, but hang on, not, not your time right now, but it's all right. But I want to thank you for bringing those things up and as you encounter other difficulties. To make sure that you politely make the city office aware of them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, there's been a number of fixes going on lately in the city. Some of that's ODOT's responsibility and some of that is ours and I just wanted to recognize the fact that all that is going on. And there's been a little bit of communication issues there, but by and large, I was very impressed by both sets of contractors. They seem to be very earnestly trying to do the job right. I appreciate that. Sometimes contractors are not the most polite people and we seem to be getting the right folks this time. Uh, one thing that I know this is gonna be, the public works aren't here tonight, so I noticed that the islands in front of. Daniel Scott and the Forest Servants are needing mowing. We do such a great job right there where the old waterfall is. And it looks such a beautiful piece of, of part of the Sandy and you just go a block and a half and you see all these weeds. We really need to mow those, mow them a bit more often. And the mode of looking good, I noticed today I was at the library and on the west side of that. A lot of those beans are really starting to look rough. And not only is it a rough look, but it's also tough on the maintenance of it to be able to. Long term, you're gonna end up being more expensive if we don't treat them relatively often. And I do know as an old property manager, if you don't keep your building up and running clean, cleaned up with the bird poop. And all the rest of the things that are there, you're gonna get people disrespecting it. And I know that some of our folks who like to camp there, maybe that's part of the reason why I think that is a place to do that. Same thing with our city and police station. I know that we put that in the budget to paint that puppy. And I think that's really time that we should, hopefully get that soon.
It's in the budget, yep.
I, I know it's in the budget. I'd just like to see it get done. And that's it. I didn't talk about art tonight.
I, I don't know much, I just, you know, with regards to the. Laws that are getting passed and, and what that does to our city. I hope, I think we all have a common goal up here to make sure that we have a diversity of housing, of high, medium and low housing. And some affordable housing and things like that. I think we all want that. I think what worries me is that when we have no ability to control that, I really want to see us. Push our, push consultants to give us some tools to. You know, how to work code to achieve that, that common interest, you know, to follow the, the guidelines. But also give us, protect some of the things that we want to protect and not have high density everywhere in our city. Because that's not what people move to, so we can continue to kind of work with those.
A bonus.
Yeah, you ever get a bonus of two hundred percent on your salary or anything?
I want to echo what Don said about boards and stuff. I think that's a great idea, so I'm gonna keep on bringing that up and I think it's very well deserving. The Carl Fesel, the median thing, but I do notice even like around the Barco and stuff. Some of those beans are kind of high, the bushes are brown a little bit, and it's to the point, I'm not so big on it, but it's actually affects you. And so especially as cars are kind of, so. Stress gets tired, it's, it's hard to see cars and with kids and stuff out at school now and stuff. That's really all I have, looking forward to summer.
Parks Board met last week, talked mostly about the community campus park, put a task force together for park naming. And, uh, and then also I believe they'll be moving forward with the trail, it'll be funded, grant funded, so. Let's get stuff going on over there, so that's all I have. Chris. Did not have a planning commission meeting, but the last one I had, we did the T S P, this came to us today, so that was done. Second on the development was last week. And we took the strategic plan and prioritized projects to start moving forward with that were approved. And then the only other thing I had that wasn't really answered, maybe Tyler can give me an answer, because of the delay. Upsetted votes on agency budgets. Our wastewater project. Yeah, where, where are we at on that? Is it, has it been pushed to September? Like everything else, or are they gonna streamline it here in the next ten days? Do we know? And, and then, in either case, do we have a proactive plan of reaching out to, to keep that message alive for, for Sandy? Because I saw, I saw Nellie's email last week and I was just, I didn't hear anything about what we were doing about it. Just wanted to go back.
Oh, yes, primary floor. Are you good? Yeah, okay, I'll totally be returning to that. All right, a couple of things is, I'm gonna be, one is thank you to Don and Rich for working together with me and Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. And so we'll either be having that, and I think we decided to probably put that on the city council meeting agenda instead of a work session. Because there's quite a bit of consensus around it, but we'll be able to talk and amend and talk about whether we want to adopt it or not. And then we'll, we'll look to adopt it rather than take up a whole work session. Of course, as council knows, we can table things. You know, a future meeting if it's not right where we want it to be, but we feel good. There was a lot of consensus, it should be pretty straightforward. Uh, the other is, you know, thank you, Josh, for the memo that you distributed out late last week to council on some of the housing different issues. Let's make sure that everybody kind of takes an opportunity to absorb that. I think it was about nine pages, so there's a lot there. But I will be looking to schedule a work session to kind of bring everybody's heads together on that. There's a lot of, there was a lot of what you can't do. And even some of what we can do isn't really that feasible to do, but there are some items in there for discussion, I think. That would be good for us to touch base on. And then the other thing I'd like to have a work session coming up on is government relations, and so that kind of gets to. Legislative session will be ending, I believe, on Sunday, so twenty-fifth, that's constitutionally mandated. The Capitol Construction Committee did meet this morning. They're not done. There's a lot of things that go towards the end. It's not looking great for our ask. I think there's a variety of things around that, mostly political. You know, we had with the Senate walkout and some of the things that are surrounding that in the flow of session. Someone, our representation, our presentations involvement, some of those things. And I, I think in the work session, we want to do some reflection on our ask, on the size of our ask. And we saw kind of the size, some of the projects are looking like may get funded for more kind of the five to eight million range. Fourteen for variety reasons was kind of up to the side. They really staffed the agency budgets quite a bit this last time. But yeah, that'll be something we want to reflect on. But the other thing I want to talk about with government relations is, is what we're gonna, how we're gonna utilize our consultant. In the meantime, both for preparing for legislative pass that may be a short session as well as a coming long session. I think there's a lot to do at the county level, especially with implementing some of our transportation system plan goals. With the broader county transportation system that's going on. And then the other thing I wanted, when session's over, I wanted to utilize Nellie on something. I wanted to kind of get your guys' feelings on. Lori let me in about a week ago. She additionally serves on the board for the Sandy Community Action Center. And there's an issue going on with the Action Center right now with the Oregon Food Bank. The Oregon Food Banks who provides the food to Sandy Community Action Center, they have not received a food delivery in over three months.
Almost three months.
In almost three months. That goes out to some of our folks most at need. My understanding is kind of what occurred was is that there was an audit of the facility that found two things. One was that they were selling peanuts at the front door for how much?
It was, basically, I can give you a quick, I almost gave an update, so. So there was either a complaint from a person shopping or we had a, some kind of a surprise visit. I kind of tend to think it was a surprise visit. And a volunteer had set some stuff out and some things were being sold, so the center made maybe a hundred dollars. The other issue was that a staff member was asked if the Action Center uses IDs. And the person said, well, I maybe have asked for an ID once. Oregon Food Bank took that and has run to the wall with it. And so they put us on a ninety-day suspension. That ninety-day suspension, during that time, they have also cut off all food. To the Action Center from Fred Meyer, grocery outlet. Starbucks, because Oregon Food Bank has gone and got partnerships with all of these places. So the biggest thing. So the biggest thing, we've, we've been able to find vendors in other places, but we cannot find any proteins. And so we have people who cannot get any meat right now. Despite our best efforts, multiple communications, multiple meetings, we are getting a complete and total runaround. From the people who are supposed to be helping us at the Oregon Food Bank, from mixed messages to every time we meet, it's a different set of parameters of what we must do to get in the convergence of the Oregon Food Bank. We have now met with, I think, five, we're, I think, staff member number six. We're still getting nowhere. So now we're starting to go to their board of directors. I asked Dan to potentially get the governor's office involved in this. We've got some board members who would like to start talking to the media. It's, I mean, it's really out of control. What bothers me the most is that they're taking punitive action against the Action Center. It's actually hurting. We have six hundred people that were last. Yeah. And so, and, and so that's who it's hurting. Over that we may have asked for an ID. And, and so it's just, it's very. It's just, it's really a bad situation.
So I have some connections in government. Nellie has some connections that I don't have in government. And what I'm asking to do is basically spend about a week and not a lot of time, but really to kind of brainstorm with Nellie, see who we can proactively, who she knows, who I know. That we can kind of reach out to in the governor's office and other places that happen in at the Oregon Food Bank to kind of try to leverage, just to get it moving a little bit, to get some deliveries going to the Action Center. But is everybody okay with me utilizing our lobby representation to do that?
Precise and tactical.
Okay. Have we already reached out to the board of directors?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, have you? Stan?
No, no. Well, you mean that of Oregon Food Bank?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I kind of wanted. So we both kind of run those. I know some of them and Nellie knows some. So I wanted to kind of just give the end up with her. So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, because you know, sometimes when you go to the governor's office, that's kind of like going over everybody's head and, you know, then.
You want to start lower before we go there. Yep.
I hear you. And I'm sure you probably have. Yeah, and I don't disagree, but we're at, we started here and we've, we've gone up the food chain and it's, it's the same song and dance. So, you know, and it's, it's to the point now where it's, I, I don't. Yeah, I'm, I'm past frustrated, so I, I'm ready to actually. Look to get out of our partnership with the Oregon Food Bank on a permanent basis. If it were up to me, that's totally, it's not solely up to me. So. It's, it's just ridiculous.
So we'll do a little bit of work on that. Thank you for that. Really appreciate it. And then remember Thursday is going to be a lot of fun. Make sure I will as well, but it feels like, I love like the pre-memo, you know, is where, how things are all going to land and where to plug in. It's really buttoned up. You're doing a great job organizing it. So that's all I have. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks.